Good evening. I'd like to call to order the town council meeting of Thursday, October 26. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements. The following dates are the scheduled regular meetings for the town council that I know everyone here will attend. Thursday, November 2nd at 7:00 PM. In fact, all of them are 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. November 2nd, November 16th, December 7th, and December 21st. I also want to reiterate the schedule for the reappointment of the soon-to-be vacant position of the town council. Letters of interest need to be into the town hall by November 6th. Interviews will be scheduled for the 8th and 9th, depending upon how many applicants we have, and selection will occur during the town council meeting on November 16th. Eileen?
The Town of Merrimack's 25th Annual Halloween Party will take place tomorrow, Friday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at Wasserman Park. This free event offers all kinds of games and crafts and activities for all different ages. And what's truly amazing about this is that this program has grown to the point where we're expecting between 800 and 1,000 people at this event. And what it shows is that more and more people are taking advantage of the programs that Matt Casperius, who is our Parks and Recreation Director, has rolled out. And I'm just really proud of him. There's all kinds of opportunities for every one of all ages, and I hope that everyone takes advantage of, you know, checks into it and takes advantage of any of those things that are going on. The other thing is Saturday, October 28th, this Saturday, between 10:00 and 2:00 PM is National Drug Takeback Day. So please bring your unused or expired prescription drugs to the Merrimack Police Department, where they will be safely disposed of. And I believe we also always have a box in the lobby or the area for people to bring their prescription drugs and to dispose of. And that's all I have.
Okay. PFOA update. Bill, do you have anything?
Yeah, very quickly, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity to have a coffee this morning with a member of the Citizens for Clean Water, Wolfram Von Schoen, in response to some discussions we had after the last meeting regarding a formal organization of the Merrimack Water Advisory Committee. They've offered up, Wolfram's offering up himself, Rachel Ricker, and Nancy Murphy, with Councilor Albert and I serving as a part of this committee initially. We talked for about an hour. He presented a proposed agenda, which we discussed, and kind of got a feel for what the overall organizational purpose is. So we're hoping to have our first organizational meeting either on November 15th or November 29th, at a place to be determined. It's either going to be the Club Room at the library, or it'll be down in the Memorial Room in Town Hall, be one or the other. So the, obviously, the organizational meeting might be a long meeting, just from an introductory standpoint. But the goal moving forward would be to just, even if it's just meeting for an hour and 90 minutes, talking about things that are impacting the town, where light and communication can be maintained, the goal to be meeting on a monthly basis will be brief. But at least there'll be a formal place where people can come and talk to Councilor Albert and myself and all members of the committee on any issue that they may have. So I look forward to reporting back at a future council date.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Do any of the councils have any questions, Bill? Or Pete?
I'm sorry?
No. No, I was wondering if any of the councils had any questions from you. Okay. Highway Garage Project update. Anything to report?
Yes. We met last week. I don't remember the date, but our, the floor planning for the building is coming to a conclusion soon. It's pretty close to being complete. The engineers are working a mechanical place, because we're trying to handle that without consuming a lot of usable space down in the office areas and all. It's behind, two dates in November, which I don't have here, I think it was November 5th and November 16th, I believe, both Liberty Utilities on one day and Eversource on the second day will be coming to go over possible rebates for energy-saving ideas that we might incorporate into the facility. Let me see, the construction management team is beginning the pre-qualification process, looking at contractors who want to bid on the project, components of it, to have them come in and be sure they're able to be able to complete the project, their aspect of it, that is. And then, presentation to the town council will be on November 16th. And I didn't realize this, but a hair from Kyle says December 5th, the Planning Board will be seeing a presentation. So I guess both of those, we were only anticipating one, but those will be happening on November 16th for a council meeting, the 5th of December for the Planning Board. And I think that's it for right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody have questions for family? No? Okay. Comments from the press or public? Please just come up and say your name and address. You have three minutes, but anything on the agenda or not on the agenda, whatever.
Sure. Hi, I'm Wendy Thomas from Wildcat Falls.
Wendy, the mic is, the mic is, it's automatically from in there.
It's flashing.
It's flashing.
Okay. I'll speak loudly.
No, it didn't work.
Last time I was here, I told you that our well water was going to be tested by Granite State, and it came back with a total of... Oh, okay. It came back with a total of 20.4. And what's significant about that is that I live five miles from St. Cobain. Right now, the state is only doing two areas of interest. One is a one-mile radius from St. Cobain, one is a 1.5-mile radius for St. Cobain. I also, our water, excuse me, our water also tested positive for nine other PFOA chemicals specific to St. Cobain. So this is something that's in the water. Right now, as you know, our state maximum level for PFOAs is 70. If I lived in several other places in the United States, my 20.4 would be, I would be told that our water is too dangerous to drink and to not drink it. New Jersey is trying to lower the value to 14. Vermont is already at 20. These are chemicals that stay in your body. They don't disappear once you have them. If I stopped any exposure to these PFOAs today, it would take me four years for the value of the PFOAs in my body to go down by half. That's how long they stay in your body. When I went, when I spoke with the state people, I asked them if they could give me confirmation that 20.4 is not harmful to somebody who has an autoimmune disease. We have several kids in our family that have autoimmune diseases. They couldn't assure me of that. 70 is clearly too high. 39 is too high. 20.4 is too high. We have to get this water cleaned. We have to get it, we have to hold St. Cobain accountable for it. I just had lunch with a friend of mine who's a real estate agent, and she told me that Merrimack and Litchfield are problems as far as selling houses, because the water situation is getting known. At the meeting, they handed out several brochures. One was a blood test result brochure, one was a fact sheet, one was a drinking water fact sheet health advisory, one was a filter information. I've been passing out PDFs of these files to people who have contacted me. I'm going to assume that you're going to put it on the town website. These were the, this is the information that was passed out by the state. Lastly, when the state heard that our well was 20.4, and that again, we're five miles from St. Cobain, they are coming down to our house and they're retesting our well. And they've offered to test other wells in where, around where I live, which is the private side of Wildcat Falls off of West Chamberlain. So if anybody, excuse me, if anybody has a private well in that area and would like the state to come down and test, and they would do it for free, then you need to contact, well, you can contact the state, but you can contact me, and I can give you the direct information. And my email is W E Thomas at Gmail dot com.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Next.
Yeah, thanks a lot. It's Mike Malzone, 80's Chamberlain Road, and had a pretty large thing written out tonight for Dan Dwyer, but I see we've got a packed, packed house here, so I'm going to make this short this week. Met Dan Dwyer in 2006, when I ran for office here in town, in Merrimack. And Dan was one of those people I met on the side of the street campaigning, he was running for office, too. We had a lot in common, I had thought at that time. We banter a lot. I think we disagree on more than we agree with. But I consider Dan Dwyer a very good friend. We've had some spirited debates over the years, Dan, we really have. But I've also had the honor to be at your kids' weddings. You two, you get a great family, and it was very nice to be there with those kids, to have watched them grow up. And it was a pleasure, and I know that you gave a lot back to the town. It's a lot to be here. It's a lot to spend this time on this town council. I know what you all go through. It's a lot. But you promised me you were going to lower my taxes, and you didn't. So as much as I'm going to miss you as a friend, will not miss you on the town council. I did not know that we had a big police force here tonight. And I see that we have a new chief coming in. But I want to say, I've been here for 25 years, and we've gone through four or five chiefs since I've been here, but it's always been an open-door policy down at the police station, I got to say that. No matter who you were or what you were in this town, if you had a problem, you could always walk into the police station and ask to talk to the chief. I do hope that continues in this town. I've never had a problem going to the police station. So good luck with the Men in Blue in the room. Dan, if I can approach the bench. Yeah, I appreciate it. Please, it'll be fine.
You didn't think you were going to go unscathed, did you? Any other comments from the public? Seeing none. Okay. What I'm going to do, without objection, I'm going to move the new business number one, which is the police chief confirmation, to the present time. Now, I know that all of you will remain when we review the chap, 15 chapters of the code, right? You'll all stay here and help us review that. Anyway, Eileen, I'd like you to take over at the moment.
I have the distinct pleasure of interviewing the people for the police chief's position. And it was a difficult choice. But I'd just like to start by saying that the process is, starts, particularly with the police and fire department, it starts with making the decision whether or not you want to stay in-house, or whether you want to go outside of the department. Many people said to me, came to me and said, you know, "Don't go outside the department." That was never anything that I considered. And the reason why is because we have such a fine department, and I'm so proud of you. Your community is very proud of you. Your, you know, your attention to community events and community policing is exemplary. And, you know, as Mike Malzone just said, you're all very approachable and professional. And I think that it's not easy to get onto the Merrimack Police Department, because it is just recognized as being one of the finest in the state. And we get a lot of applicants, and it's also not easy to get on to the Merrimack Police Department, because there are criteria that we expect, that the, that the people that are hired have the same philosophies and, you know, attitudes as well as skills that we're looking for to continue the department forward. So thank you to all the police officers that are here and those that aren't, for doing such a wonderful job. We're all very proud of you. And we'd like you to continue going forward and doing the really good job that you do. So then it came down to, how do I hire the police chief between a couple of different people who are, who are exemplary people? And so I looked at both people and saw that many of the, they had many of the same qualities. One of the, one of the qualities that is most impressive is that both of them, and I'm not going to use that phrase again, Denise, both of them have spent their entire adult lives so far working for the people of Merrimack. And that is, says a lot for the department, and it says a lot for the people. So I could go on all night about the other candidate, because he also deserves accolades and appreciation. I think very highly of him. I had a chance to speak to a number of people from the police department, volunteers and members of the community, and a couple of extra other former police chiefs, about, you know, the process and how I should go about it and look at it. And I really appreciate the advice. And so I came to the conclusion that what I, what the town really should be looking for is a leader for the future, someone who embraces community policing with all of its heart, their heart, and to someone who wants to move forward, as I said, into the future, which requires, you know, continuing education and also bringing up their various people through the ranks, which is very important. It also, once the chief is hired, people will be coming and moving up through those ranks. So without further ado, I would like to introduce my choice for the police chief of the Town of Merrimack, Denise Roy.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Well, first of all, I'd like to know if there's anything, if there's anything that players would like to say.
We had a meeting before this, just to let you know. We had a lot to say then. Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start it off by saying that Captain Roy has my unequivocal support to be the next chief for the Town of Merrimack. Not only is Denise an extremely affable and personable woman, she sets a standard every day in how she conducts herself, personal integrity, character, but above all, in my observation of being a council for the last six years and learning under not just Captain Roy, but from all the other police officers that have come before the council, I've learned that, like everybody here that's standing here, Captain Roy is nothing less than the consummate professional. And I think Merrimack is the type of community that deserves an individual like Denise Roy, representing the blue on a daily basis. So I'm very enthusiastic. As I told Denise privately, it gave me, it gave me chills to tell my wife and my daughter that we're nominating a woman to be a police chief here in Merrimack. So I'm thrilled, and I look forward to supporting the nomination. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Anyone else? Yes? Pete, and then Jackie?
I also want to congratulate Chief Roy. I've had, worked with her many years. I think she's going to do a great job. And just by the show of support here in the room, it says a lot. Good luck.
Jackie?
Yes. I am very pleased to see Denise standing here tonight. I think that she will continue in the very, very good culture that our former chiefs and all the people below her have demonstrated over the years, makes Merrimack a very special place to live, and I feel confident in our ability to do that.
Tom? Thank you. And it's a privilege and an honor to be up here, to be able to talk to you, to take this moment, and especially Denise, to congratulate you and thank you for stepping up to help Merrimack to move forward, in the presence of so many of the past chiefs that have been your mentors, and the presence of so many of your staff that will be your staff soon. I think it's a real testament to your abilities and to the hard work that you've done, the effort you've put into your training, your education, and your overall outreach to the people of the Town of Merrimack, and especially to the staff within the police department. And so I want to add my congratulations to the, to those of the other councilors here and the rest of the town, in having you come join us in Merrimack as our new chief. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, you want to say something first?
No.
I knew he was going to do the motion, so that's why I looked at him. I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilor Dwyer.
Actually, and I did just want to say...
See, wait a minute, I asked you, and you said no.
Oh, no. I, just for the record, I didn't want to jump in front of Tom Kenny, because I did see a motion to speak earlier. But I just want to say, it was a few years ago that I realized finally that Denise was a longtime member of our community, because I remember as a kid, and that was a long time ago. My folks, we had just moved into town in 1971, and we were driving down 101 A, and my folks were laughing at the sign that said, "Eat here and get gas." And as a kid, I'm going, well, yeah, you eat there and you get gas. What's so funny? And then I figured it out finally. But it was about, three years ago, Denise made a presentation for the historical site, as I recall it, and that's when I found out she'd been around forever. And so, so regardless, if I might, I would like, with pleasure, I'd like to have the council affirm the town manager's choice of police chief to be Denise Roy.
A second by Dan Dwyer. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
No one better oppose, that's for sure. Okay, I'm going to come to you up there. It is truly my honor and pleasure to be the one to do this. And I'm going to read this little thing first, I got to put my glasses on. Whereas there is a vacancy in the office of police chief in Merrimack, and whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence in your ability and integrity to perform the duties of the police chief, we do hereby appoint you Denise I. Roy, Police Chief of Merrimack. And upon taking this oath of police chief, and having this appointment and the certificate of oath of office recorded by the town clerk, you shall have the powers to perform the duties and be subject to the liabilities of such office, or until another person shall be chosen and qualified in your stead. I'd like you to raise your right hand, and I'm going to have you read, so you don't have to worry about...
I know my mic won't.
Right here down.
I'll hold it for you. I'll hold it back here.
Okay.
I, Denise I. Roy, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a police chief, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, Paul, and especially Eileen. I promise to be brief. Where's Chief Doyle? I really mean brief, chief. To say I am overwhelmed at the attendance tonight would be an understatement. And also, an understatement in the trust that Eileen and the council has placed in me tonight. It is truly, truly overwhelming. There are so many people that I would love to thank. I want to touch upon a few people right now, especially Paul Stavenger, who just placed my pin, my badge, rather, on me. I don't know if you understand the profound effects and impact that you've had on my career and my life. For those of you who don't know Paul Stavenger, he retired after many, many years, in excess of 30, as a deputy chief of Merrimack. He has been a constant in my life, a constant role model, a constant moral compass, and a constant work dad. Sorry, I know that makes you sound older than you are, but... 24 years ago, he and I had a conversation at about 2:00 in the morning on Henry Clay Drive, and I don't know if he remembers this, but he convinced me to stay here in Merrimack, because I had been offered a position in Portland, Maine. And I stayed, and it was the best choice that I've ever made, and I would not be here today if it had not been for that conversation, so thank you. Actually, one of the, we did want to mention, one of the most important lessons that you've taught me, and for those of you who have been around for a while, they know this, because every time we walk in the locker room, one of the things that you brought to light was, do I measure up as one of Merrimack's finest? And I hope that I do. Thank you. Thank you to my family and my friends. Without all of your support throughout the years, there's no way I could stand up here today as the chief of police. You have no, you have no idea how you have helped me through some of the most stressful times in my life, whether you knew it or not, whether it was when I missed family events, functions, when I missed holidays, or I missed the fact that my parents weren't here to see me today. So thank you, I really appreciate all that you've done for me. Thank you to my friends and colleagues who have traveled a long way today to be here. I appreciate the support more than I could ever express to you. And thank you, Chris, wherever you went off to, if you're sitting there. I appreciate all the support. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the citizens of Merrimack. Throughout the years, I've been fortunate enough to make many wonderful connections, whether it be through business owners, volunteers, or people who just needed our help. The town is incredibly lucky, lucky to have caring and compassionate community. We share a partnership, and I think it's extremely important for me to tell you that that partnership that we share with you will never diminish. We will continue on as we always have. The Merrimack Police Department's commitment to providing you with quality service is a top priority for the police department, and we will work with you to make sure that we remain one of the safest communities in the country. Lastly, but certainly most importantly, I want to thank every person that I've worked with and work with today. Each and every one of you have taught me something, something in how I want to be as a person, how I want to be as a leader, and how I want to be as a police officer. The culture which the leaders before me have passed on will continue. With each new generation, we take what we have learned and we make our own mark on it, just as those who are starting out their career will do someday in the future. To all of you, I make a promise. Promise to do everything within my power to give you the training and the tools to make sure that you go home safely every night to your families. I promise to do everything for the right reasons, and I promise to always lead in a way which will make you proud to be a member of the Merrimack Police Department. In the words of Maya Angelou, "The quality of strength lined with tenderness is an unbeatable combination." Let us all have that unbeatable combination. Thank you.
Now, I am well aware that you all want to stay and help us with the 15, I've said again, 15 chapters of the town code. What I'm going to propose... again, 15 chapters of the Town Code, but I'm going to propose a five-minute recess so the room will clear. Okay, council? Council, I'd like to call the meeting back to order.
Sure, sure.
Can you get your vice chair back here?
Where's Finley? Where is he? Oh, here it comes. Hey, Steve, how are ya? Very good, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Any discussion could be pleased to be taken out? Okay, now that I'm ready. Okay, I do want to make a point of saying that the, under the recognition section of Town Councilor Dan Dwyer, that's going to be moved toward the end, because we need to have you around, Dan. Could you take off on us?
We want to block, yeah.
And we know it's all the colors of the town that will be worn down, right?
And I've been asked if we could do the budget things early. Does anyone have any objection to that? I don't think it's going to be a lengthy discussion, correct? It's mostly just a presentation. Okay, so we're going to do new business, number four, direction for 2018-19 budget, to ask the town council to contemplate budget parameters for the 2018-19 budget season, which will be discussed at a future meeting.
Don't worry about it, it's in the packets. This is one. The numbers, the numbers have been very, very weak.
And just to let everyone else know who might be waiting for another topic, I'm going to be doing the reviewing, the consent agenda toward the end. So, all those chapters that we're going to be talking about, you guys don't need to hang around for that, okay? I just have to try to do that, right? We have to be there, but it doesn't mean everybody has to be here. Okay, Eileen, go right ahead.
Okay, as we always do, every year, to kind of prepare you for some of the things that we see going forward for next year's budget, we constantly update those, everything changes very rapidly, but we have a lot of, a lot of the numbers in, like health insurance and various state revenues and that kind of thing, and we wanted to point them out to you before we start the budget process. Okay, so, we know that we're going to have an increase in our health insurance of 8.5, which is the guaranteed maximum rate. One of the reasons why we're having an increase is because it takes about three years for them to compile data and do actuarial calculations for what each year will bring forward as far as expenses go, because as you know, you can have an expense in one particular year, but you don't spend it until the next year. So, or that, or that particular illness may take care of you into the following year and beyond. So, as we go forward, I expect that the health insurance will, health insurance never decreases that I've ever seen, but I expect that the increases will be significantly less as we move forward and with these plans that we have. Sure, yeah.
Eileen, I know in the past, are we going to, we had a point where we were going to shop it around again, shop the insurance around. I know we moved back and forth and saved significant money. Is that going to happen again?
No. We don't really have that much, we don't really have that much to choose, if anything to choose from anymore, because the other group, which is inter-local trust is called, and they represent the Harvard Pilgrim Plan, it used to be Primex that did that, and an individual has taken that over. What I have seen happen, and probably Paul agrees with me, is that the poor performers have all moved over to that program, and they were seeing increases of 25%, 28%, sometimes twice in consecutive years. So, I personally don't feel comfortable with going to a plan that could potentially go up and down so rapidly. At some point, when the, when the, it seems to be stabilizing, and they have a wider, broader array of risk levels, then would be a good time. We have found that the rates that we have are good, our increases last year in particular, most people within the health trust and within inter-local saw double-digit numbers in the 20% range, and ours came in at 3.5%. So, again, you know, we couldn't live with a surprise like that when we pay almost $3 million in health insurance. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay.
But just to amplify on Peter's point, okay, the town of Merrimack, you know, we've been very lucky that our health costs have been low, because that means that our wellness costs have been sustained, and any catastrophic costs have also been reduced, as opposed to somebody that may have high catastrophic claims looking to go into another plan, obviously you're going to see a double-digit increase because of the level of types of claims that are adjudicating through that particular, through that particular plan at that given time. So, it's conceivable that if we were to shop, we might move, it might be a slight increase because we might be moving, we might be new moving into that particular trust. But I think, the way that I look at it, since it's a modest, it's a modest increase, and we've been able to manage and be able to provide wellness opportunities to our employees, I think we've done, we've done a good job that warrants staying the course, at least in my opinion. There have been other communities that have switched and have been whacked double digits, so that's only because, you know, like I said, they're...
They're lowballed.
They either get lowballed to siphon them in, and then they're locked into that particular... And the other thing to consider is that if we were to switch, we're going to lock in, am I right, Eileen? We're going to lock in for two years. We can't just be jumping around every year. You've got to lock in with that particular group for a minimum of two years.
That is applies to the health trust?
Right.
So, they won't let you back in for two years.
For two years. So, if we were to jump to inter-local, or if we were to jump to school care, which is the third other offering that's available in the state of New Hampshire, we would have to go there and we would be locked in for a minimum period of time before we could begin to shop elsewhere. So, there's something to be said about stability and staying with the particular provider.
I want to go on with this all night, but I just, I just wanted to add to what Bill just said, and that is that going to somebody else without the historical information of the new plans, if you don't have three years of that experience, they can't properly determine what your rate should be. So, they have to come in kind of high. So, property and liability insurance not to exceed of 10%, which is pretty good. I think our rates for property and liability are fairly low. Yes. Okay. The, I'm going to be, I am going to be proposing a change in the short-term disability, that is short-term disability, in case you were wondering what those, what the acronym was.
What?
So, anyway, short-term disability change, and the reason why is because if someone, if somebody who, the way that the plan works is that a person gets, when they're out and they're ill, they get $700 a week, or $100 a day, because it goes for seven days. So, if a person makes more than $500 or $700 a week, then that's all they get. So, you, you know, some people, that's what they make, and so, that's sufficient for them. Other people end up having to take all their vacation time, as well as their sick time when they're ill. So, I am, and you'll see the number when we go forward, all these, all these increases and changes you will see shortly, but I just wanted to kind of discuss them a little bit. So, it's a proposal that I'm going to make, which basically, instead of being $700 a week, that it be 70% of the individual's weekly paycheck. And because it's spread, and like any insurance, because it's spread amongst many different people who use it or don't use it, it becomes much more affordable. So, then there's an increase in the short-term disability rate anyway, which is another number that you'll see in just a few minutes. Workers' comp has increased, is proposed to be increased by approximately 10%. I don't know what our experience mod is. Do you know it, Denise?
62.6.
62%. Again, wonderful. The way that workers' comp works is that everyone in the state gets a different, gets a rate for every category. So, a police officer is this, an office worker is that, all the various highway employee is this. So, we go down, everyone has the same rate. The way that it gets modified is based on your own experience. So, as Paul was just telling us, we're at 62%. So, that means that 100% means that you're doing well, 62% indicates that you're doing very well. So, I do have some concerns, because we seem to be having some more, some work-related injuries lately, and we're actually going to have Primex come in and check some of our equipment and that kind of thing, to make sure that there, if there could be modifications perhaps to the, some of the pieces of equipment that we have, or the practices that we use, because if a person gets injured on the job, they can be out for a long time, like a shoulder injury or that kind of thing. And particularly the fire department are facing a lot more challenges with bariatric patients and that kind of thing, trying to lift people that, yeah.
Do you find that the Joint Law Safety Committee has helped you at all in identifying some of these?
I would say yes and no. We, I feel that we don't have enough of a balance on the board. It's difficult to get people that, you know, so that you have a good representation of management versus, you know, regular employees. And for that reason, as these claims come forward, a lot of times, I would, I would disagree with whether or not it was preventable or not. And if it's deemed to be preventable, then, you know, things are done. If not, then it just lets, it just goes by. So, for instance, a person just very recently was using a piece of our equipment and tore his rotator cuff. He's going to be out for months and months and months, and there's no reason for that. We, you know, we have very expensive equipment, it's new equipment, and it needs to, either it needs to be modified so that it doesn't injure the employees, or, because the person was using it properly, or that we have to do something else, because we can't continue to allow our employees to be at risk. You know, I mean, what I was told is that, that what they do is they switch people off. You know, you do it for a couple of hours, then I'll do it for a couple of hours. And if I had known that, that would have stopped a long time ago. Any other questions on that?
Okay.
Okay. So, we have six union contracts, one is in the second year, five are in the last year. So, we have five union contracts to negotiate, and the, this relates specifically, the number that you see will be the numbers that were on the warrant for this particular year. So, we add them all together, and that's what you'll see for the number that we express to you. Yes?
Eileen, and I remember when this happened, and I understand it's probably organizationally-wise, a good thing maybe, when you have five contracts all come up in the same year, you can kind of manage them all. But I also wonder too, if it's, if it's such a big impact all at once, whereas you could have, you could have a couple of come up in two years, and three years later, you know, and I don't know, I guess I look at it strategically that way. I mean, now we're looking at five, and if we're going to renegotiate, maybe we should spread them out a little bit?
Just to let you know, that's a discussion we almost have every other year, whether, how to time the various contracts. So, it's a good question, but it's not new. But go right ahead. There's pros and cons to both.
I totally agree with you, and going forward, it's something that I'd very much like to do. The reason why we kind of squished all of them into, we actually tried to do all six of them in one year, but the reason why we were doing it was basically for the Affordable Care Act and our fear that we were going to start getting penalized for not have, for having a Cadillac plan for health insurance. So, that was primarily the reason why they all ended up ending at the same time. But, you know, as, as we move along, I would very much, because I'm one of the ones that sits at the table, you know, try and spread them out. I think that's a very good idea.
Right.
So, as I have said to you before, the, I am going to propose a non-union wage increase. I have not decided what my proposal will be yet. I know I told you that it would probably be in the neighborhood of 2%, and the reason why I am reluctant to stick with that number right now is because some of the positions that we have tried to recruit, we are unable to fill. So, for instance, Denise's position as police chief, we did a study, people in her position are mostly paid in the $120,000 range, and we could only, I'm not saying these are small numbers, but, you know, you need to be comparable. And we're very fortunate to have a very good staff, and we want to make sure that we keep them. I am so delighted by the department heads that we've hired, and as I said, there's, you know, if you think about it, and think over the people that you work with on a regular basis, you'd hate to lose them, because other opportunities come up. Fortunately, at this time, we have people that are devoted to Merrimack, but someday, you know, $20,000 is going to look awful attractive to somebody. awful attractive to somebody. So, so anyway, I've asked Sharon to start looking at some numbers from comparable communities, not for all positions, but for some. And I'll be bringing them to you in non-public session to take a look at. And, you know, I just wanted to let you know that I'm not going to try and skew the numbers in any way, in anyone's favor. They'll, they'll, you know, it'll be, all be clear to you what communities I've chosen. And if you think that I should choose other ones, then I'd be happy to get them. So the other thing was what Council Koenig brought up, this new polling equipment for voting booths. We have that in there this year. We'll give you a number in a minute. Natural gas rates, we just signed, singed a new agreement.
Singed.
A new, singed, we singed a new agreement, which is a 0% increase. So that's always good. And we, electrical rates, no increase because we have a long-term contract. Solid waste disposal, there's an increase in tipping fees of $1 for trash. We have a long-term agreement with Waste Management. I believe it was actually for 10 years, one of the first things that I did when I got here. The rate for tipping fees is approximately $69 per ton, which is significantly better than most of the other communities around. Particularly, I always love to look at the, the regional solid waste group that goes to, that goes to Pennacook, because they're basically a consortium of, you know, different communities. And theirs are significantly higher than ours, even though they're a consortium. And I think that's a base, basically because we went in and locked in certain rates early. And also because the person that is the owner of Waste Management lives in Merrimack. So we played on that one, too. So, so the tipping fees will increase the budget, which is, we bring in about 8,500 tons of trash a year, regular trash a year. Recycling, we bring in consistently 1,500 tons a year. It doesn't seem to be increasing at all. It's, it's a, it was a bit of a, we had a little bit of a sticker shock as it related to the cost of recycling materials being disposed of. And a couple of the council members asked me that question, which is a very good question. Probably five years ago, four years ago, or something like that, we were actually receiving money for, for selling our recycled materials. And that was great. But since then, we've started paying for the disposal of recyclable materials. And as time goes by, one of the reasons why that's happening is because in the country and in the world, recycling has become so popular and so easy to do in terms of, you know, single-stream recycling, and people being more environmentally conscious and that kind of thing. Kids getting all over their parents, that the, there's kind of a glut in the market, and the recyclable materials aren't as valuable anymore. So we belong, again, to a consortium, sort of, I guess you'd say, that goes out every year. Am I doing that? Who did that? Dan Dwyer?
No, my mic's on and my phone's vibrating. I apologize.
All right. So we, every year, we take a look at our recycling, I think we signed a contract for three years, right Kyle? So we, we take a look at it, and we, you know, see what the best price that we can get, or the least expensive cost that we can get. We have seen, again, other communities, it's cost a great deal more for them to pick up trash. I have actually spoken to Waste Management to see if they could match the price that we have. And they said, sure, but you have to dispose of it yourself. So, I mean, you have to transport it yourself. So I was asked by both councilors, what is now the difference between, between regular trash disposal slash transportation and recycling? And the answer to that is approximately $70 a ton, comes to something like that. So if you take, so it costs us $69 a ton for the tipping fee, which is basically to dispose of it. And it costs us another $52 to transport it. And with the recyclable materials, it's one fee. So you pay your, you pay your $53, and they take it away. So there's still a significant difference between recycling, it's still to the benefit of, of us, and to the, to the citizens to continue to recycle, not only because it's a significant savings, but also because it's good for the environment. And I think at some point, we're going to have to take a look at that, if it, if it continues to increase. But it'd have to go a lot higher.
Finley, you got a question?
Yes, thanks. So what is the total cost for the trash transportation and?
I'm going to give you approximate numbers. Okay, so $69 for a tipping fee, and approximately $52 for transportation. So what does that come to?
121.
121, approximately.
Per ton.
Per ton, versus $53 a ton.
Yeah. Okay. Because I was, my thought initially, before I put all those things together, was that there are certain components of recycling that are more valuable than others. And because it's all single-stream, we get that one price. And I was just wondering, and at that difference, I'm sure it's not, we're not to the point of changing it yet. I didn't know if it'd be better to call out cardboard, which goes up and down, but tends to be one that's more valuable. And, but we're far from that right now, I think.
That's, I think that's really important. And it's something that we've considered in the past. But it also goes into the, believe it or not, they look at the quality of recyclables. So when they give you a price, they say, is it all cardboard, or is it all this, or is it all that? We do, the metals do get removed. And then there comes into consideration the idea of a person actually going through and trying to pick out cardboard, and the cost that that would be. But they, the Public Works Department and their employees have spoken to different individuals who bring in a lot of cardboard, like people from the mall and that kind of thing, and suggested to them, if you're going to have all cardboard, why don't you just put it over here? And, you know, people have been very receptive to do that.
Dan?
A quick question. Generally speaking, do we have, we had been fined or targeted for having contaminated loads, so to speak?
No, we are very clean.
And so for the years that we've been doing it, we've always had pretty high marks?
We've had very high marks, but we have a lot of people looking out for it, too.
You asked that with your question?
I am, yeah, because the delta's pretty substantial still. So I wasn't thinking of the total, and that's when I was getting ready to ask my question. Thank you.
Okay. This is, there is no increase in New Hampshire retirement cost rates, because they're two-year rates. But I think it's really important for you to take a look at them every time. Fire department has now reached a level of 31.89%. So for every dollar is 31, for every dollar is 31 cents, almost 32 cents for retirement, that we're required to pay. And the employee, I believe, it pays in the neighborhood of 9%, 11, excuse me. The police, same thing, 29.43%, crazy. And
Wicked crazy.
It is crazy, yeah. So, and the police, again, they pay 11%. Everyone else is 12.15, and that, that basically means all of the office staff and the public works employees, et cetera. And we pay 7%. So the difference is because the fire department and police department, although that's changing, but we have to make up for kind of sins of the past. They've changed the retirement age for police and fire officers, as well as everyone else, as well as making provisions in there for when an employee can get a subsidy for health insurance. Which, again, I'm not, I don't begrudge anyone that. But in the past, when you could retire at age 45, and get, you know, get a certain percentage of your wages, go work somewhere else, and, you know, have a health insurance subsidy, it was almost, it was almost to your own disadvantage to not take advantage of that.
So what is the age now?
50.
25 years instead of 20.
And with, at 50 years of age, I believe.
Is that right?
At 50 years of age, 25 years of 50 years of age.
Yeah, it's changed to, it's been in effect now for, we're going to be in five years and changing.
Right. That's true. But it takes a long time for that to filter in through, because the people that are, basically people are grandfathered in. So if you worked in a certain, you know, for a certain period of time, then you, you're still at 45, and you still get the same subsidy.
Go ahead.
And regarding the pensions, I guess, the retirement, I guess I look at it as, you, we budget X amount of dollars because we have X amount of people that are eligible for retirement, correct? And if only one person retires, then the rest of that money, at the end of the budget year, goes back into the general fund. How does that work?
Basically, what we do is, we have an account called compensated absences. So we, every year, we pay those rates on every single person's salary, and it goes into, it goes into New Hampshire retirement system, period. And when somebody retires, it's their relationship becomes with the New Hampshire retirement system. And believe it or not, if a person retires before that magic year, let's say 45, or 60, or whatever it is, they keep the employer's portion. The retirement system keeps the employer position. So, so if you, to make a long story short, you would take, if you were looking at the fire department, you would take their salaries, you would take their overtime, and you multiply in that, times that amount. And that's what we have to pay into the New Hampshire retirement system every year. Is that clear?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Some of the things that are, what's that? I'm sorry. Jackie?
Jackie.
Yeah, sorry that I didn't jump on this a little bit quicker. Is that extra to make up for the shortfall that the retirement fund had had?
To some extent. I think it's, I think there's, it's a bit of a political football, because there are strong contingents of, of the different employee groups that have influence with the legislature. So, so for instance, the teachers have a big presence in, in the, you know, what do you call it?
Lobbying.
Lobbying for certain things, as do the fire department. So even though the modifications are being made, because they have to be, there's just no way that you can keep going on the way that you have. That they, you know, it's slowly getting better, and, and the fund is getting healthier, but very, very slowly. And it will, will continue to improve as the stock market starts paying better, bigger dividends, because that helps. Unfortunately, what, what happens is you have each, each group, meaning group two, which is fire and police, so I'll give you that for an example. You have fire and police, and all that, all the money for the fire and police, 30, 31, and 29% go into one account. And it earns interest. Anything over, by the legislature, anything over a certain percentage goes into the secondary account. And that secondary account pays for additional benefits, as well as in cost of living increases and that kind of thing. So as that number, so let's say it's 8%, 9%, they need to increase that number, so that it can continue to fund the, fund the program itself and make it stronger, without collecting excess to the side. Because what, what happened in the past is that they were getting so generous with the benefits, that they were even offering, for two or three years, everyone, the everyone else category, health insurance subsidies, that they never contributed toward, because there was so much money building up in their secondary account.
I guess I'm looking for clarification. What do you mean generous with the benefits?
Oh, what I was saying is that, to give you an example, was that the people who were, you know, public works employees, people like myself and that kind of thing, who didn't pay for, in order to get a subsidy for health insurance, they were offering that subsidy. And now they have to pay that forever for that person, even though it was never, just because there was money, money left over, didn't mean that they had to spend it.
Don't you talk about the police and fire pensions?
No, I'm talking about everyone else.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Because they have, they have subsidies that they've been paying for, for years. The other group of people haven't been. And they were offering it to them.
Thank you.
Okay. Some of the other pending things are state revenues, rubs and mails taxes, and highway block grant. Those usually don't change a lot, but we always keep our fingers crossed that they're going to go up. The other thing is the use of fund balance. That's a decision that you'll need to make yourselves. We can't presume to make that decision for you, even though the discussion has taken place about what you would perhaps like to do next year. We can't make that decision for you. So we put that as a question mark, and we've also included it in our numbers. So don't be alarmed at the, the numbers that you see, because just if, if you didn't use the $450,000 that you did this year, it would increase the tax rate by 13 cents. The other thing is veterans' tax credits, is something that was brought up to me from, from one of the taxpayers in town. It's expanded, something that, that was introduced to the legislature and approved a couple of years ago, whereby they expanded the, the people who are eligible for veterans' tax credits to not just those people that participated during times of war, but to a much broader range of veterans. We were very concerned, or I should say, I was very concerned, because there was no way of us to tell how many of those people might be out there, and how much the rest of the taxpayers would have to subsidize that amount of money. So we, we kind of sat on it, waited for a year to see what other people, what, what the indications from other communities were. To give you a sense of it, and I've sent this really all to you, we, we, I guess you'd say, forgive $567,000 of taxes for veterans. So each veteran gets $500 off their tax bill, currently, under the, the old scenario. What we've seen is the highest amount, which is the city of Nashua, who rolled this new program out, is giving tax credits in the amount of about $39,000. So it's not such a huge, significant amount of money, and certainly probably won't be for us, being a smaller community, that, and, and it's, it's a good thing to do, I think.
What's the $39,000? Is it off the tax, the assessment?
Uh, no, it's actually off, off your tax bill. So what I'm saying is, in Nashua, for instance, they had 79 extra people.
Oh, cumulatively, okay.
Times $500. And I think that comes out to that.
Gotcha. Okay. Good point. Finley and then Bill?
Go ahead, Finley. I actually saw those numbers in the email that was sent out. And that's suspicious to me, because for, it just appears to me that there've been a lot of people outside of the parameters that are currently set up, that there are a lot of people outside of that that are veterans as well. I would have assumed that there were more
Me, too.
than that. So that's why I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I'm totally, and it could be accurate, but I'm just stunned if it is, but.
I agree with you.
And then, I guess we're going to be talking about that later, so I don't have to comment further.
You know, as I said, I agree with you, I was very, very surprised that the number was so low.
I have a hard time believing it.
But, as I said, I, it's all information from other communities that have, have seen those numbers, and from talking to the assessing office, which is not necessarily the be-all and end-all of the, the answer to this, there have been seventeen people who've come in and sort of demanded us to change to this new expanded credit.
Now, we're going to be having this on the agenda, is it the next meeting?
November second, yeah.
Bill?
I was just going to say, I looked very briefly at the change in the law. The old law, I think the, I don't have it in front of me, but part of me wants to say that the original, I mean, the old law, the language read ninety, ninety days of act, credible active duty service. The new legislation took out that whole piece, took out that whole active duty component, which I, I'm interpreting, not only is including people that did active duty service, but also reservists, people that did their ten weeks of basic training, then were automatically either went into the, to the National Guard or the Army Reserve, so I think that's what the, what the change is.
Paul?
Basically, the old law stated that you had to serve in wartime, Korean War, Vietnam War.
Certain dates, right?
Certain dates. So, if you were between the Korean War and the Vietnam War in the late fifties, early, before that, you were one of these groups that got overlooked. The new enabling legislation for, for Town Councils, basically anybody who's been honorably discharged from the military, is entitled to this veteran credit.
So that's going to be all discussed during the November second meeting?
Yes.
One of the good things, and I forget who was, who was it that asked about the POW license plates? So, that was actually, good sense of timing, because the data that we got also included the number of veterans as well. So I think it kind of gives us an idea of.
In terms of registrations.
Terms of registrations.
Doesn't tell you.
I understand that, but at least gives us an idea, or a ballpark, of how many people might be, potentially would be applying for that credit.
True. Okay.
It's, it's still a, you know, it's still a crapshoot.
Yep, November second.
So, here come the numbers. These are all recapping what we just talked about, except adding numbers and tax rate impact. So, the health insurance increase that we talked about of an eight-point-five percent guaranteed maximum rate correlates to two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, an increase in taxes of, which represents six cents. I, first, I'd like to point out to you that if you look above, at the first number above, over to your right, it shows what our estimated tax rate, which is very close to being finalized, is four dollars and ninety-two cents for the town. We are expecting a one doll, one cent increase in the town's tax rate from the year before, and the school is looking at seventy-four cents. So.
Seventy-four cent increase?
Yes. So, which, again, still puts us at twenty-two percent of the budget. So, twenty-two percent of the budget.
How did you?
I know.
How did it be so good?
Huh? Well, the thing is, you know, I mean, you can cut it, and somebody else can spend it, as I have always said to you. So, property and liability increase is an increase of about eighteen thousand dollars, which is less than one cent. We have a, a tax base of three-point-two billion dollars, approximately, or, or close to three-point-three billion dollars now. So, you know, a penny increase is thirty-two thousand dollars. Short-term disability increase relates to the one that I was talking about, modifying the, the parameters for the short-term disability, for those people in the, in the, the non-union is twenty-six thousand dollars. The regular increase for the non-union is eighteen thousand dollars. So if we didn't make a change, it would be eighteen thousand dollars anyway. The, the proposal that I'm making adds another twenty-six thousand dollars, so it'll be, give you something to think about. The workers' comp at ten percent increase is an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, again, less than a penny. The six-union contracts, again, if you look at the Warren articles and look at, at next year, you add all those numbers together, and you'll come to three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, which represents eleven cents.
That's built in already in contracts that have passed?
Yes, exactly.
That's the increase in wages and benefits?
That's right.
For this coming year? Okay, thanks.
The non-union wage increase that I talked to you about before, of two percent, is, comes to sixty-nine thousand dollars with benefits, and two-cent increase on the tax rate. Voting booths are approximately fifty thousand dollars, which are, as Council Koenig would tell you, are very much needed, a little bit over a penny. Natural gas increase, in case you weren't, were wondering, was zero, with a zero increase. Solid waste recycling, that's going to cost us fifty thousand dollars, that difference between us paying twenty dollars and, and the difference between paying fifty-three dollars. So, that's going to cost an additional fifty-three, fifty-eight, fifty thousand dollars. The solid waste tipping fees, that is one dollar times eighty-five hundred tons. So, it's a dollar increase in the tipping fees per ton, times eighty-five hundred tons, which comes to eighty-five hundred dollars. Use of fund balance, that's where the big question mark is, are you going to use the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars again or not? Again, that's your choice. If you decide to use it again, you can subtract that thirteen cents back out. If you decide, if you decide not to, it will cost you thirteen cents, because it's already built into that four-ninety-two up at the top.
So, the one cent increase for the town, part of that is a result of the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we gave back?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Okay. Otherwise, it would have been twelve cent increase.
A twelve cent increase, right, okay.
So realistically, if you don't do a fund balance to offset the tax rate, the tax rate next year.
You need to.
Thank you.
So if we don't, if we don't, if we don't access the fund balance to lower the tax rate, instead of, instead of the tax rate proposed at four-ninety-two, it would be five-oh-five. Am I understanding that correctly?
For that component alone, yes.
If we hadn't, now, next September, will it be able to deliberate the same thing?
Gotcha.
Do we want to, again, offset the tax rate by four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which would take away that thirteen cents?
Right, okay.
Pete?
Eileen, I noticed one thing that wasn't talked about here, and I don't know if it's significant, or if it's going to be an issue this year, is vehicle fuel.
Here's my fuel guy, right here.
Actually, at four-thirty today, we just signed a contract for fifty thousand gallons of unleaded and forty-five thousand dol, forty-five thousand gallons of diesel, and the rates came in favorable, and we should be all set. What was in the budget last year, it's less than what we budgeted for last year, so we should be all set again.
Great work.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Gasp, gasp. Affectionately stated, just.
You hear me, I guess.
With all those things combined, it looks like a thirty-eight cent increase, which is probably not realistic, because of, I'm sure that you're going to decide to use, as you have kind of indicated already, that you're going to use some of the fund balance to offset the tax rate. Excuse me?
Doesn't include any assessments.
And this also doesn't include any changes in the assessments, so as values, values are continuing to go up, and despite what is being said, values are going up. I know Dan sold his house in, in five days for almost as much.
The housing market is extremely good.
The houses are selling like unbelievable.
Yeah, they're selling.
Even surprising me, I.
The market, the market is very good in Merrimack, yeah. So, one of the things, I might as well just say it out loud, one of the things that we're going to be facing to an, to an extent, is that Lauren has increased the value of the mall by seventy-five million dollars. And the reason why is because, in the past, what we had to do when we were valuing the mall, was had to use the income method, because it's impossible to go out and try and find, you know, comparable sales and that kind of thing, as far as that kind of thing is concerned. So, currently, we were valuing them at approximately ninety million dollars. So, in investigating this further, they had gone out to do some financing and had given a number over two-hundred million for the value, while at the same time telling us that their, that they were, their tenants were paying nothing for expenses, that they were paying for everything. So, we were really not even getting the net number. So, once you take the net number, and subtract that from the revenues, you end up with a hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars worth of value, not, not ninety. So, you know, we will be, you know, you'll, you'll see that coming before you, but, as I said, you know, there's not much of a leg to stand on there, because we're using their numbers. And, and, you know, having also talked to the various tenants about what they're paying, and it's pretty consistent, you know.
I did mention to Eileen that there was some concern expressed by some people about stores closing at the mall.
There was a couple.
And apparently, that is a non-issue, in terms of evaluation and assessment, because that would certainly show up, right?
Right, and you see people, you see people moving in and out, a lot of things happen around Christmas time, people come in and out, they want to do a seasonal thing, and that's just the nature of the mall. Percentage-wise, they're still very full.
Okay.
So, we have no concerns about that. But, isn't it nice to see the old shaws starting to shake up?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Really is. Wow. Really.
Even with its present state, that's true.
Very nice.
Okay, any other questions before we move on? Okay, let's move on to the next, which is.
Is she done?
Are you done? Yeah. Review of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget schedule, and this is basically, go This is really the dates that we receive every year, the projected timeline, and how we're going to be reviewing the various budgets within the departments, and.
Correct. Yeah, correct. Basically, we're proposing three meetings again this year, in the month of January. We're gonna start the, in December, we'll get the budget books to the council on a USB, and anybody who wants a budget book will print those for, for the council. Dan, I'll send your book to.
But, we'll start on January eighth. You know what, email it to him, make sure his email gets locked.
I'll find it. He likes paper.
Yeah. So, January eighth, we'll, we'll begin the budget process, and that will be our Fire and Police Department.
Yeah.
Then we have a regular council meeting on that Thursday, the eleventh, and then the eighteenth will be another, the, the next budget meeting, and then the twenty-second will be the last budget meeting, without any snow, hopefully. So we'll be right on track for our twenty-ninth recommendations, and if there is a snow date, we'll be able to, to grab whoever we lost in the snow.
When's the last date that we would have for putting something on the ballot?
It depends what you're putting on the ballot.
Let's say for the veteran things, for example. We had talked about, just to let the public know, this was a topic we discussed at our retreat, and at the retreat, we talked about looking at the numbers, finding out comparison to other towns, to see if we could get a number, but the possibility of putting it on the ballot for the town to decide, since the town, other citizens would be subsidizing that, so I was just curious in our timeline.
If it is a, if a citizen initiative brings it forward to the council, they have until the second Tuesday in February.
Okay.
Which is.
February thirteenth.
February thirteenth.
Okay.
If the council's bringing it forward, and the council, after, if they discuss this in November, and they want to put it forward, and, and to the thing, to the ballot, we can, we can have it discussed at a January meeting, then just moved as a Warren article itself.
Warren article, right.
And then it will be, when we do the public hearing, I believe, which is the, the fifteenth, the special council meeting, the fifteenth, then we'll take it up in a public hearing.
So you have plenty of time.
So you have plenty of time.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, are there any other, yes, Eileen?
I hate to continue to mess up your butt here, meeting, but I'm wondering if I could do the O'Gara Drive components next?
Actually, hold on here. They were going to be next, anyway.
I do want to just guess.
Because I'm, just to let, because I'm going to do all the chapters later, because all the other, everyone's waiting for these things. We'll do those things, then we will be here anyway, guys, so we'll do all the chapters then, okay?
There are a couple dates that I do want to, want to get out there. I know it's only October, it's not even Halloween yet, but the opening for council positions, the filing period, is February twenty-first to March second, this year. And I know we'll have at least one position open, and then three others for, for a full-time three-year, and one for a one-year. So, but that filing period's from February twenty-first to March second. And those are important dates, and of course, election will be the second Tuesday in April, which is April tenth. Can't believe we're already talking April.
Okay, the snow will. Please.
Okay, so we're all set with that? Any questions about the schedule? Dan, any? Wise guy. I couldn't resist. Okay, I'll do the recognitions later. Town managers' report, do you have anything? Do not, okay. We'll do the consent agenda later. Okay, why don't we do all business, O'Gara Drive Recreation Area Discussion?
Can I follow you? Yes, please.
All business number one.
As you know, this discussion has been going on for some time, primarily because of the, basically, it's a piece of property that the town has, has leased from the school for some time, where a number of recreational elements exist. One is the tennis courts, the other one is the skating rink, the other one is the skateboard park, and the other one is the basketball court. So, we ended up getting all wrapped around the axle on this one, because we had accepted some grants that were in perpetuity, quote-unquote. And so, we tried to find a way to get ourselves out of that mess of perpetuity. So, Matt Casperius has been working diligently with the state, who has been in contact with the Department of Interior, who represents the agency who initiated the, the grant process. So, to make a long story short, in order to get out of any perpetuity clauses, and to get out of the grant requirements entirely, you cannot sign another lease agreement with the town, with the school district in any way. So, it can't be, okay, we'll keep the skateboard park here, and we'll make arrangements with you that we'll continue to maintain it and that kind of thing. You have to wash your hands of it completely. And that's the easiest way to get out of all of that, because if you sign any agreements with the school district on any of these components, any of them, the imperptuity then applies to every recreational component there, even though the grant didn't pay for them. So, let's say the grant did not pay for the skateboard park, which I believe it did not, you would still need to replace that somewhere else, and they're not looking for something cheap either. They want you to pay the exact amount that is the, the retail, or whatever, whatever value of what a skateboard park would cost.
Now, just to make sure everyone knows, we are going, this will be a topic of discussion at the joint meeting. And I'm sure you'll be presenting a lot of this then, right?
So one of the big things that brought this to our attention was the, was the condition of the tennis courts, which have not been usable for a number of years. And so, you know, the question was to the school board, what do you want us to do with it? You know, we're not going to be replacing the tennis courts anywhere else. We have tennis courts already at Watson Park, so the town council has adamantly said, we're not replacing the tennis courts. So, school board, what is it that you want us to do with that? And what they said is, we want you to bring it back to the way that it was, which is basically dirt.
Dirt.
So we've come up with some costs for removing the tennis courts only, and the cost is approximately twenty thousand dollars. That also includes removing the basketball court as well.
That's for both?
For both, including the lights.
Okay. Yes, Dan?
Is that inside work or subcontractors?
Both. So we don't have an excavator or a person to run an excavator, so we have to hire somebody with equipment and with the employee, and all the materials will be removed by our employees and brought to our trash transfer station. So moving the skating rink to...
I'm sorry, Pete, did you have a question?
I just, I was kind of surprised, and it's kind of a side thing.
You need to, is your microphone...
I was kind of surprised that we don't have an excavator, and with all the guys with all the skills over at DPW, that we don't have an operator of one. And I'm not, it seems to me, from the work these guys do, would use an excavator.
Quinn, he didn't think he'd be called.
I called him this morning.
Go right ahead.
Hi, thanks, Pete. We certainly do have operators capable of operating excavators. Back in my early tenure with the town...
You need to push the button? Okay, thank you, that's all right.
Back in my early tenure with the town, it was time to replace, I think, the excavator we had at the time.
Is it not?
It was twenty-plus years old, and, is that good now?
Must be, is that?
Talk a little louder there, Kyle. Make believe you're talking to your kids. Yeah, go.
So we looked at, looked carefully at whether we should buy an excavator or not. Well, we ended up deciding at that time with buying a second backhoe, because most of our work is maintenance work, and it just didn't make fiscal sense for us as a department to own an excavator, because there's so much more purchase cost wise.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, apparently it's not. Do you switch again?
I think it's on.
Oh, it's on.
Well, he's saying it's not.
All the mics, there we go.
Stereo now. Sorry, Kyle, go ahead.
So back then, we made the calculation that it just wasn't worth it for us to own an excavator, because they're very expensive pieces of equipment, and if you're not using them every day, it just doesn't make sense to own one. So we bought a second backhoe, which is what we still have today, and then knowing that if we had a special project, that we would rent an excavator. And we did that, you'll recall, we did the Woodbury Street drainage project and the Star Drive drainage project. For those projects, we actually rented an excavator. We can still do that for this project, to rent an excavator for a week. I think back then, it was five thousand dollars a week, I'm sure it's more now.
Five thousand.
Yeah, so the project's not such a...
Twenty grand.
Does that answer your question? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So we can do that fairly quickly, depending on the weather. Also, the person that is going to be, came in with the lowest bid, is the person that's working on the DW Highway project, so we don't want to pull him off that. So the second one is something that is, something that we really could make into a very charming feature, and we talked about that as in relation to Watson Park and the view of that from the DW Highway, how that might look with lights on it. The rink itself, a few years ago, we purchased removable or movable equipment so that it won't be difficult to move. The issue really relates to the lights, so it may be that this coming season, that people can skate only during, until dusk because of the lighting situation. I'm not sure, but I think that the lights where it was on O'Gara Drive actually came from the area where the, where the lights were for the tennis courts.
Couldn't we use the gazebo as a platform to put floodlights on?
Kyle?
Oh, yeah.
That's an idea.
I don't know if we draw enough power, based on rocks and what we've done with power-wise, it's...
Oh, it depends, it depends on what we have...
Right, and probably the amount of, what do you mention? Right, exactly.
But we do have the portable lights that are trailers.
They're diesel, and they're really, 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 really loud.
They're not that loud.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
They're really loud.
You can tell, he didn't sit next to her.
So, anyway, anyway, no.
You can't hear him in Florida.
All I want to tell you is that we're going to do our very, very best, because we all agree that this is a very good, attractive project. So Kyle and Matt have come up with three different options, based on a whole bunch of different things, including the level, the topography of the area where the tennis court, where the skating rink might be, and this is Watson Park, and here are your three options, we're going to get into them a little bit. If you look at that green area, that ugly green color, that is, option one is encompassed in the area of a flood zone, and that's a fifty-year flood zone, so you can see that option one is not necessarily a good option. And, sorry, option three is a little bit in it, but it's really not of that much of a concern to us. Option two is free of flooding concerns. So here's option one, and this is, there's the pros and cons, this is the most picture...
Picturesque.
Picturesque.
Looks nicest.
Picturesque of the three options, because there's great visibility from the street, and it's close to the pavilion for seating, and cons are, this is the one that falls almost entirely within the fifty-year flood plane, and we would need to fill in some additional areas to level out the site and, or move right up against the park road. There are also potential limits on the usage of the park for other activities.
During the winter, what kind of activities would you do?
Snow showing.
I think what, I think what's also is, is that this is not just going to be for a skating rink, I think, what...
Don't unveil.
We have an unveiling of something else, so...
Yeah, what goes underneath it. But that's not winter.
No, but that would be for your summer activities.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay. I understand now. I'm a little slow, but I usually catch up. Go ahead.
It's hard to see, this is option one, front view, hard to see, but probably easier to see in your packets. I asked Kyle and Matt to go out and place cones to show where option one would be, and they showed a couple of different views. So this is option one with a front view. This is option one with a front view. This is option one with a rear view. And so now we come to option two. So if you would please, Paul, can you go back to the, show the three different options so we can see where that is? So option two is right, right there.
It's behind the gazebo.
Behind the gazebo.
Behind the gazebo.
Okay, so...
That's good.
Option two is good, because it's not in the flood plain, the ground is already flat. Is this the one that was where the dog park was being proposed?
No, but it's adjacent to it.
Okay. It doesn't impact anything else that we might want to use the pavilion or park for. Cons are, it's mostly hidden from the street view by the pavilion, and it's a very tight fit into the space.
And this is really close to the pavilion, right?
Yeah.
I love the idea of the pavilion, because you could have just benches there to put your skates on, and you could have lights even just on the inside that would radiate.
Yeah, would be lovely. So ice skating rink, option two, this is the front view, again with the cones, this is the side view. We don't, unfortunately, we don't have an aerial view, so we're just going to have to imagine. Next, this is the rear view, and this is option three. Can we go back to the first one again? So, option three. This is where the old dog park was.
This is where the dog park was going to go.
Yeah, okay. Okay, pros and cons. Pros are the, it has the most amount of space around the site to move, adjust, and expand. It's the closest option to the electrical panel, the ground is already flat, it doesn't impact anything else that we might want to use the bandstand or park for. The cons are, is that it's partially hidden, hidden from the street, and I think we're going to have to come to, we're going to have to come to grips with that idea, unless we want to put it in the flood plain, that it will be partially hidden from the, from the street. As for the, I'm sorry.
I just want to disagree a little bit on that one. I think three is the greatest spot, and what you perceive might be hidden will not be hidden when the leaves are down and there's lights, and everybody in town's going to know exactly where it is. Even if you're driving by it, you're still going to see it. It may not be in your face like option one, but in that back location, there'll be no doubt, anybody driving by, that there's an ice skating rink back there.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the concern that I would have is you'd have the impact on the condominium complex that, that particular property, because it goes back to what we talked about with the dog park five years ago, with that dog park impacting the condominium there, and whether or not there were discussions as to whether they were amenable. I mean, that's a conversation for that neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a conversation that generally is about, has to do with, with lighting, which as you know...
It may be a curfew at a certain time of night, the lights go off at nine, something reasonable.
Yeah, or, you know, the directional kind of lights, that kind of thing. But yeah, I agree that we should talk to the neighbors before we get involved in anything like that. Yes, Jackie?
On Bill's point, I think is a real one, but I think that it'd be kind of like living near a school, that there's some activity during the day, but, and once people get home, the kids will be gone too. I was thinking about option three also, that there's like five things in its favor, it seems to me, that it's a somewhat unusable space, it's kind of an alcove in the park, and it seems like it would fit real nice in there. And the biggest one is that it's not in the flood zone, and the thing that you're going to unveil would be terribly damaged if there was a flood, and I would think that we'd want to keep it out of the flood. And the other thing is that it's right on, oh, the roadway would be plowed.
Anyway.
The roadway's plowed anyway, and it would be easier to park in the wintertime. And you know what I was thinking about the pavilion, with all due respects, it would be lovely for the kids, that place would be unrecognizable within one year with the kids, it would be so beat up, with the kids and their skates, and they'd be climbing in there to change their skates and all.
Well, that's going to happen no matter where you put the park.
Where you put the what?
Wherever you put the rink, they're going to be using it to put the skates on.
Well, I don't think they would use it if it were in that alcove area so much, and anyway, my, another thing is that I think they wouldn't seek out the pavilion to sit in in the wintertime, it'd be cold.
It's that hot.
I think they'd be looking for someplace where else, like, we can move the picnic tables, so that it would accommodate them by the rink.
Here's the pictures, kind of lousy pictures of the option three.
I do like three.
Yeah. Rear view, side view. Side view again.
Let's go to the big reveal.
Big reveal.
Yes, Kyle's recommendation is to put underneath, whatever option you choose, some volleyball courts, so that in the summertime, we can remove the ice skating rink and allow people to use them for volleyball courts. Interesting, huh? Yeah, so the pros of that are, I think they're all pearls personally. I think it's a good, good idea, except for, there's only, there's cons on one and two, so if you're interested in options one and two, obviously, they relate to the flood zone and the flood proximity to the pavilion, but if you select option three, really, there are no cons. It's a lovely amenity to have, it doesn't junk up the park by, you know, making too many amenities there, it just utilizes that space all year.
Yes, Pete?
You know, and I have to say, I support the option three, I'm sorry, I have to say, I support the option three on this as well with the ice skating rink, only because if you've ever watched them play or played volleyball, if you're in option two, that's going to roll down into the river, it's going to roll, you know, and then if you're in option one, the people that stay in that main area of the park with picnic tables and cookouts, your ball's going to be bouncing into their laps, so I think for both, I support option three.
I see someone in the audience who would like to say, well, I'm going to provide the option. He wants to make a comment. Not that Tim Tenhae has an opinion about anything. Go ahead, Tim.
So, Tim Tenhae, I'm not sure where I live right now. Daniel Webster Highway. I'm in between homes.
Oh, you are, okay.
The proximity of these options all come close to Babu's Brook on one area and the South Hegan River in another. They're both protected water bodies, you should be careful about what you can do within so many feet of those water bodies, including cutting them trees or anything like that. The other thing, given the heritage of that property, you need to be careful how deep you would bury the post that would hold up those nets and things like that, so just wanted to make you aware that there's other concerns you want to look at, so.
Thank you. Good point. And I'm assuming Kyle and/or Matt know about the shoreline protection issues, right? Do you foresee that as an issue for any of the options?
I don't. Do you have the...
Yeah, why don't you come up here? He said, he answered, I don't, but he's going to come up and...
I think, given the recreational nature of the use, that there won't be a problem. The trees that would need to be removed for option three, which it sounds like the option that's favorable to people, it's a cluster of kind of scrubby trees, they're not a high quality value of trees. We're more than fifty feet from the river in the brook also, so I don't foresee an issue.
And then we do have a restriction in terms of digging because of the history.
As long as you do pile driving, right?
We can drive piles, if we do any digging more than two feet deep, we need to get a soil management plan through DES approved. It's not something that can't happen, it's just an additional process that we need to go through.
So, but the point that I would point out is that the poles have to come out in the winter for you to put down the ice skating rink. You can't just put a pole into the ground and then pull it out, because it goes back to the same conversation we have with the dog park five years ago, about installing a fence and taking it out. You can't do it, because you're going to open up, you're going to, you're going to compromise the integrity of the top that's underneath the soil, that's keeping, keeping those, the toxins, the pollutants that are underneath... that's keeping, keeping those, the tox, the pollutants that are underneath there, keeping them separate from the, from the topsoil that was put on top of it.
So, you have any answer to that, Kyle?
Yeah, we'd likely have a system where there was a, a pipe in the ground that's flush, and the volleyball pipes that hold the nets would slide in, and we'd just pull them out and cap them for the winter project.
That's fair.
Correct.
Thank you, Kyle. Oh, sorry, Tom.
Is there an issue at all with filling the floodplain area that's on the corner of option three, or...
We'd, we'd have to talk to DES about it. It's very minor, so I don't, again, I don't think they would present any concerns for us, but it, it would be something we would talk to DES about.
But you are talking about leveling it out, so you'd have to lift up that area, that corner somehow.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
But you'd be adding dirt, not digging.
Right, right.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
But anytime you fill a floodplain, you have to be careful about what you're doing.
Okay.
And there is a, there is a restriction also in that part for a fill that can't exceed a foot, as I recall.
Sound familiar?
I don't recall that restriction, but it may be in there.
Yes, Dan.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Sure.
Couldn't you move it one or two feet closer to the, to the gazebo to not do that?
You need to put your microphone on.
It, it appears to me that you would actually have to go back away from the gazebo, because that's where the water appears to be.
Correct. And really, anytime we get into a project like that, we would try and balance the cuts and the fills anyway, which would equalize the, the impact to the floodplain.
Okay, thanks.
Finley?
I'm just thinking that, I believe the general consensus, and I'm on board with it, is option three is the best choice.
That's not true. That's not true.
Okay.
It's my choice.
We'll take a consensus in a moment.
Anyhow, so what I'd rather do is let them, you know, let Kyle and the whole team come together with a proposal, and if it doesn't work, then we'll know. But right now, we're just throwing around ideas that are, we don't have real answers to. So, that's, that's all.
November's next week, so they wanna...
Again, I don't, Bill doesn't want it there apparently, but for me, I'm happy with three, especially with the addition of the volleyball, because I think in front of the gazebo for an ice rink would be awesome, that we would be taking it out in the spring.
Right.
But if we're gonna leave volleyball, I'd rather not see that in front of the gazebo, you know, the pavilion and everything that's there. So, that's why I'm opting for number three, because of the volleyball.
I'd like to get a consensus so that we are clear. Anyone who's interested in option number one? None. Option number two? You're option number two.
I'm one and two, but it's, it's different, different cases.
And option three? Okay. Is your majesty's...
That's called a consensus.
You're gonna be a Tampa Bay Delawareans fan in a couple weeks, so...
Bill, is your concern about the neighbors on three?
Yeah, I'm really concerned about the encroachment on the neighbors. I, I can appreciate the concept of piggybacking the volleyball courts, which it's a great idea, so don't get me wrong. It's a great idea for a summer activity. But I, I'd be perfectly candid with you. I'd rather, I'd rather see the ice skating rink on option one, because that's, but that was the whole point of looking at Watson Park for the ice skating rink, was to have this attraction that was visible coming, coming in and out of, out of Daniel Webster Highway. And, and because it's in a floodplain, folks, we're talking about the winter. When was the last time that it flooded in December? Okay? That to me...
If you're doing it just ice rink.
If you're doing an ice rink, I, I think that's a logistical location. Now, I figured I made the point about the volleyball courts being an option one. I agree with you. Who wants to be having a picnic when the ball keeps popping over there? Option two is a viable location to have the volleyball court, because it's away, it's gonna be away from the recreational area where people can picnic. It's gonna be tucked way back in. It's gonna, it's not gonna impact the neighbors. And quite honestly, it gives people a viable location where they can congregate under the gazebo and watch people play volleyball and take turns participating in the, in the game. So, I don't like option three because of the encroachments on the neighborhoods, but I think there's, there's, in my opinion, the volleyball location at option two and the ice skating rink at option one make a lot of sense to me because of the specificity of the location and what it actually would do to draw people into Watson Park for that particular activity.
Peter?
Bill, I agree with you on the floodplain issue. I mean, I haven't seen it, you know, maybe twice, and it's come over the back area, the waters come over in the spring. But what we've done is, if we use option one and two, you've just taken up a large portion of the park, whereas if it stays in three, you've got a multi-use area that takes up less space.
For other public use. I think...
And I would, and I would, to be contrarian, people are gonna walk in, they're gonna use the ice skating rink, and the likelihood is they're gonna ice skate, and they're either gonna go to Buckley's, they're gonna go lobster boat, or they're gonna, they're going to go home. In the summertime, they're putting it on the backside of the gazebo. You still have access to both other areas of the park for people to recreate and congregate, and still have a viable, a suitable location for people to play volleyball.
Okay, I think my own personal opinion, I like number three for a lot of the reasons. But I think your concerns are legitimate. So, I think we should engage early on to see if there's any major issue. And it may be, you know, that modifications can be made to allay the fears of the neighbors if they have some, but we won't know until we talk with them. Jackie?
One thing I don't know is what, what do you do with the, with the ice skating rink in the summer, in the spring? What does it look like?
We remove it already.
Provenant railings or...
We already remove it, so...
Good thing you're here, Kyle.
Yeah, a few years ago, we bought a new ice rink system. You recall the old ones that was there? It was two wooden rectangles, a big one and a small one. I think it was four years ago, we bought a new plastic system, and it comes together and gets taken apart each year.
Rigid plastic?
Yep, yep. The sidewalls, and then we have the...
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, they take all that down.
Oh, yeah? And, and the railings come down too?
They do, yeah. Everything, everything gets taken away from the park in the spring when we take it down.
Okay. Do you need anything more from us about that particular?
No, just to let you know that it's very, the volleyball concept is very inexpensive, between $2,500 and $5,000. For all of them? For the volleyball courts.
For the three courts?
Yeah. Yeah, there's actually sand there too. I know, I mean, it's not...
Okay, basketball courts.
Basketball court options. I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly, see if I have to stay here all night, but this is, this is an important one in that, again, I'm glad that Kyle is here. A basketball court, people have been asking for a full, full-size basketball court, which this is not. So, in order to move this, we'd have to actually find a new location for it. And the MYA has stepped forward and have been saving money to, you know, to find, to fund a full-size basketball court somewhere. We have looked into the idea of putting it on the MYA, in the MYA parking lot at their facility, but according to Kyle, which you can grill him on, is, will, could come into a problem when we start looking at the Route Three Babuza Brook Bridge Wire Road project, where the entrance and exit of the MYA facility will need to be moved, and we don't want to have to pick this up and take it somewhere else. So, you, you can get into that in a minute, but I just wanted to say, other than that, we really, really don't have a location in mind. The only one that we can really think of is Bishop Field, which may work, although I, from what I understand, the property was donated to us with the idea that it would be a fire station. So, I haven't been able to find that document yet, but that's what I've been doing.
Yes, Paul?
I, tonight, matter of fact, I talked to the president of the MYA, and they would be amenable to sit down, once we do have a location, and discuss, potentially help with, with the full court, depending on where it is. And they'd like to just come to the table with us and discuss that and, and see where it might be.
Good.
But they're, they really would like a full-court basketball court.
So, basically, we're, we're going to be removing it at the same time as the tennis courts, though?
Correct.
For the $20,000.
Right. Pete?
Okay, and I, we heard the discussion on the Parks and Rec Committee, and I've talked to members of the MYA Board. I, I do believe we can fit that in at the MYA, and I think it's an important location to have that basketball court there. I, you know, that's a location, you can see the two hoops they have up there now. Those are heavily used. Those are used more than Wasserman Park, and it, it's a visible place. The kids like to see and be seen. There's times that kids are up there playing hoop while their parents are watching their siblings play ball. There's a lot of reasons that it's a good place for it. I saw one plan where the existing parking lot would be the actual basketball court, and then possibly parking, and a new exit out towards the wire road intersection would be, you know, would be available. And I think there's plenty of space over there. So, I really think we should continue following that route. I think we can fit that court in. I think it enhances the MYA facility itself, and I think it's a great centerpiece for the town.
Also, you can't beat the price, free. So, anyway, that takes care of the three different, three of the different components, one being the skating rink, one being the tennis courts, and the other one being the basketball courts. Now comes the big question, skateboard park.
Hold on, before we move on, Jackie, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I do have a question that occurred to me during the questioning, to tell the truth, or after I thought about, especially the removal of the ice rink in the summer so that people aren't gonna be dripping on it or anything else. And I agree with those who said that it's a scenic thing, and that the committee always used to talk about it there and look festive and all. And I'm wondering how wedded anyone is to the idea of both together, the volleyball and the ice skating rink? That we could have the volleyball court up where the dog park used to be, outside of the floodplain, and the skating rink in a temporary, you know, location, right in the middle there where everybody can see it going by?
Suppose the only disadvantage is you're gonna have to prepare two surfaces. That's all?
Yes.
The skating rink will kill the grass, so when it's, when you remove it in the spring, it's very difficult to recover and make the grass really healthy again, once it's been iced over for several months. That, that, that will scar, it will scar the property. That will scar the grass that's underneath it, and it may not recover.
It does depend on how long you leave it down. Being a builder of rinks for years, if you get it up, as soon as, as soon as it's no longer ice, you'll be fine, because the grass is still dormant, but it will kick in pretty rapidly when the sun starts getting down to it.
Pete?
But I also think the lighting's an issue. And if you, you know, you, you keep them both in one place, you know, you need, you got lighting for the volleyball courts as well.
This is, this is true. You might want it sometime.
Yep, that's a thought. And the other thing too is, grass in Watson Park is difficult.
No kidding.
Okay, now let's move on to the...
Okay, just the last one.
Sorry, Tom.
You keep talking about removing the basketball court, and I, I get that there's probably a cost advantage to doing them both at the same time. The only thing we're required to do this year is to remove the tennis courts.
You're, you're not required necessarily to do anything. It's a good, the school wants you to move the, the...
There's a liability having that damaged court there.
Right.
We should remove it.
So, the, the school initially asked for the, the tennis courts to be removed, but subsequently have asked for everything to be removed.
Ultimately, but only, the tennis courts needs to come out first, right? Because our lease still goes up through next year, right? We don't even have to take out the ice skating rink this year.
June 2018, that's right.
July.
June.
July.
June or July, yeah.
It's the June 30th.
End of fiscal year, June 30th.
So... Doesn't really matter. But, so, let's, let's go back here. Skate park. This is a big question. That is gonna be a question for the school board. And the reason why it's gonna be a question for the school board is because, in my own opinion, it's an amenity for students who are, you know, may not be interested in other things, but are very good at playing, at, you know, skateboarding, and it, it, you know, gives them an activity to do to make, to feel, to make themselves feel good and athletes and all that kind of thing. And in, in my opinion, it's, it's something that, that I would think that the school would embrace. And the only other alternative is to tear down the skateboard park and all the elements and move them somewhere else, which we don't have a location for, and it would cost at least $150,000.
Because my understanding is the dismantling of the skate park cannot be put back together.
That's correct.
So, if we were to establish it, it would be an establishment. Finley?
I don't know if we should wait for our joint meeting to ask the question, or if we should have Eileen ask the school board if we, if, if they would take it over and leave it there until they're ready to utilize the property, either as a superintendent's office or parking or whatever their plans are.
I have a personal opinion, but I may have a different one. I'd prefer to wait for the meeting.
Okay, no, and I'm good with that.
Yeah, I just, I think it needs to be said out loud.
No, I understand. And I think we need to.
Yeah.
And I think Shannon and I both agree that that's the topic that the school board and we want to discuss. And I think what we need to do is be able to get all the facts together, to be able to present the information we have, verbalizing exactly what Tom's thinking. The idea of the skate park not being able to be moved, even if we had a place, it's not movable. It's not structurally...
Destroyed, yeah.
It's destroyed.
Which has to be, you know, and, and some options that the school board alone is gonna have to decide on. You know?
Right, because ultimately, if they don't want it there, then we get rid of it. It's, 'cause you're right. I, I recognize where, a long time ago, it couldn't come apart.
And what a shame.
It is. I mean, it'd be nice, and I, I think they would see the goodness of it, because there is a segment of the population that utilizes that, and a lot, so...
So, I think personally, unless someone disagrees with me, I'm certainly willing to discuss.
Disagree with you in terms of...
Why the discussion takes place.
Waiting for that discussion during the joint meeting.
I'm okay with that, but I would ask Eileen and your team to look at the four acres between Pine and Birds in the post office that is town-owned land.
For?
The skateboard park.
And where we're gonna get the money?
Just, we own it.
No, she's talking about, it's gonna cost $150,000.
See, I'm not as much concerned about the site. I think there is a site available we could find. Then you can get into debate of, is it close enough where students can get to it? I mean, that's the advantage of where it is now. But aside from that, it's the money to construct it. I'm not as concerned about, and we could find it somewhere. We've got enough property somewhere.
Yeah, but, okay.
Go ahead.
I mean, dude, and I think Matt and Kyle shopped some numbers on what this would cost, total demo and rebuild, and what did we, what did you come up with?
$150,000.
And that would have to be a warrant article?
Yep.
Okay.
Which isn't a bad idea, quite frankly.
It's not a bad idea.
I think it's a sad, I think it's sad, you know, we have a skate park. It's an amenity for students, and I just think it would be a shame to have to just take it down, because there's a distinct possibility that the population, the public would not pay $150,000 to, to replace it.
Okay, so we'll discuss it.
At the end of the day, the question's gonna come down to, who's gonna maintain, who's gonna maintain, who's gonna retain liability insurance, that kind of thing.
It has to be the school. If it stays there, it has to be the school. We cannot have any arrangements whatsoever. We can't have any affiliations with that property.
And why's, why's that?
Because once, if you have any affiliations once at all with it, and I, I provided you a document, I'm not sure if you have it,
Yes.
from this person from the state Parks and Recreation Division, because we asked him to, to write in English what it was that we needed to do in order to get out of the imperperuity clause. And what he said is that you can no longer have any affiliation with that property whatsoever. Because once you do, that you will now be responsible for every element on that property to be replaced in perpetuity.
But that's, that includes the tennis courts, that includes the ice skating rink, and that includes the basketball court.
Includes every amenity.
But that, that, but the lease that we had with the schools reflect everything. That shouldn't preclude us from exploring doing a lease arrangement just exclusively on the skateboard park.
It does, because that whole property, the, as the guy said from the state, as soon as you enter into any kind of a lease agreement on that property anywhere, it then invokes the imperperuity clause for every element of that property. And I understand that the skate park was not included in the grant, but it is included in the, in the responsibilities as it relates to perpetu, imperperuity. No, it doesn't make sense, but that's the fact.
I don't like it.
Yes.
We don't like any of the perpetuity thing.
If I read, as I understood that, that the idea was that we couldn't get into any kind of an agreement before the lease ran out.
Correct.
Presumably, we could let the lease run out, and then come back two days later and create a new lease on that property.
I don't believe that's so, no.
Well, that's the way I read what he said, I, I could be wrong.
Matt?
Can we? Come on up, Matt.
Yes, that would be, that was my interpretation of it, was that we had to let it expire.
Has to expire.
But if we have, but I think at the same time, we're responsible for returning that to its natural state by the time it expires. So we can't leave the skateboard park there, and then wait a day later, and then, and then sign a new agreement, because we have to pull it out first.
Or leave it.
Or leave it, and they can take it over.
Or change responsibility, okay. Or they would take it over as well.
Right, for a day.
It's a very, it's a very delicate balance, it's a very delicate balance.
But it was, it was very clear in there that we had to let the lease expire.
Correct.
It wasn't so clear as to exactly what had to happen with the state of the land, except for what the school board requested.
I agree with that, but I, in Matt's conversations with them, they've been much more specific, and indicated that we really need to walk away. Just turn, turn your back and walk away.
They want us out. Well, we want out, they want us in.
They don't want to.
Well, the school district, school district doesn't want us in.
Okay, any other questions about this? You look like you have a question, Matt, over there. No?
Actually, before we get done the discussion, this PowerPoint presentation, if, we could put that on the website, under the news, so, because I know a lot of people are interested in what's happening, and this kind of spells it out.
I agree.
And if Matt, you could email this to the rest of the members of the Parks and Rec, that'd be great.
Good idea. Okay.
He had to be excused.
He may be excused. Okay, somehow we're going to get back in, what are we doing now? I'm going to do the Merrimack Conservation Commission signage discussion. Unless you guys don't want to go through the chapters with us, no? Tim?
I've already done that.
I know, not, these are the ones you didn't do. Talk to Becky.
Seven years ago, yeah, well, this is the new renewal.
This is for... Okay, this is Merrimack Conservation Commission signage discussion, submitted by MCC member Michael Boivier. Town council to consider the Merrimack Commission, excuse me, Conservation Commission request to post signage on town parcel 4D1-10, Merrimack River access under railroad parcel, and talk about enforcement. New business number two. So go right ahead, gentlemen. Thank you for your patience, by the way.
You're welcome. I am Mike Boivier, of the Conservation Commission, this is Gage. So, we're here to seek your permission...
Gage, what's is your last name?
Perry.
Gage Perry.
Just wanted to make sure for the minutes.
Also on the Conservation Commission.
Yep.
As you're aware, we, we obtained that 30-acre Sklar parcel, which is adjacent to the town parcel. And for us to improve that site and to abide by, you know, a Conservation Commission should be abiding by certain rules and regulations for that parcel. We need to post signage and make an effort to stop the four-by-four and ATV use that's going through, in a longer river there, on, on those parcels. And I, I apologize, in your handout, I don't think you have this picture.
We don't have a color.
This satellite picture. But if you can, that parcel to the north, you can see all the four-by-four ATV traffic.
We have it here, too, right?
Coming through the town parcel, and that's also going through the newly obtained parcel. And they're, they're going, you know, through the stream that comes out of that, Horseshoe Pond, I think that's Netta, is that Netta Coop?
Yes.
Yep. And, you know, they're within the flood plain, the river, they're going through wetlands. And you need to start posting, but, so to do that, to keep them out of there, we need to post on the north boundary of the town parcel, so that they will see that signage when they drive south into those two parcels, into the Conservation Commission and the town parcel. So, we need your permission to do that, I think.
Okay, do we have questions? Jackie?
Yeah, refresh my memory, what is the north parcel?
That's only, is that... The one that's not in green?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, the, the one that's, has the two parts to it.
4D10?
Yeah, that's the town, the one that town has owned for a while, that has the primitive boat ramp.
The old...
It has the road that comes under the railroad bridge.
Yeah. And the old boat ramp, where the old boat ramp is.
Correct. And then just south of the boat ramp starts the Sklar parcel.
That we just purchased, right?
Right, yeah.
Pete?
And now this is coming up, I, I agree, you gotta get, you're gonna need good signage there for all the years. And I think we talked about it last time, of all the years of people using their dirt bikes down there. But my question is more of, I know we just reviewed the conservation code, and one of the questions that came up is Sklar, by the way, it's a spelling, I think it's Sklar, not Skylar.
Right, no, there's no why.
It's spelled Skylar here.
There's no why.
Yeah, the, the, I just wanted to make sure. But it would, should, I guess we're going to put that, now that we've confirmed that you guys have purchased of it all done, that needs to go into the code, and then to adopt these rules of no OHRVs here, is that, do we have to do anything with that? Or is that kind of an overriding rule for all?
Per, per the New Hampshire RSAs, if you don't grant permission for private, you know, private, private and public properties, explicitly for use of ATVs, they're not allowed to use it. So, posting it is doing nothing more than explaining to people that there are RSAs that, tell them they're not supposed to be there already.
Okay, but, but is there going to be any wording needed for our code, though, regarding the conservation property?
It's already regulations, so...
It's already RSA regulations, so...
Yeah, I think there's one.
We don't have a picture of it, I can, I can kind of pass this around, this is a, a document that was given to us by Hampshire Christian Game. And it's, it, it was supposed to print on one sheet, so I, it's kind of back and forth, but it lists the RSAs on the front of the sign, and this is typical of the signs that we were expecting to, expecting to use.
Jackie?
That place is so busy, is a kind word, with dumping and the offer of vehicles and stuff, it's just a mess. How is post, I'm, I'm serious, what, what is going to stop that?
Right.
Do you think the signage will help?
That's the enforcement, enforcement part of it.
Right, it's going to have to be enforcement. You know, I would think they use that more on the weekends. And, you know, they're not going to stop until they get busted. There's going to be enforced, have to be enforcement, they'll have no excuse with the signs up.
Yeah, they can't say we didn't know.
Yeah, we expect we'll lose some signs. But, you know, this is riverfront property, and we, you know, we need to reclaim it and get it back, because for decades, it's been like this.
Paul, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just consulted with one of the gentlemen in the back that has written the code for us once before. You could basically put the sign up, and it would be like any sign, like, if I put no hunting on my property, I'm the property owner, I could put the sign up. But to make it enforceable, and make the police have a leg to stand on, it would definitely have to be written into one of the ordinances.
Okay, but isn't there already ordinances related to RSAs that already exist?
There is. I think you see in the...
Which is what Gage is talking about.
I think it would be made simple to put it in the code.
Yeah, it makes it a lot simpler for the police.
Worth, worth redemancing.
Because we're working on it right now, it would make it rock solid, there's no guesswork, it's there.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I think that gives you two options, too, on dealing with the issue, as opposed to maybe issuing a state summons, as opposed, you know, to dealing with it as a town ordinance, too.
Gotcha.
You have options there, should you have somebody who commits an infraction.
Yes, and, you know, we, yes.
Yes, Tim?
Basically, portions of the property are covered by state RSAs.
Tim, Tim, I have, just for meaning.
Yeah, member of the commission. There's, there's, the state RSAs cover the wetlands and, and issues like that, which encompass about 20 to 25% of the town-owned parcel.
Okay.
And, and pieces of the Sklar art that conservation parcel. But in, in general, posting all the way around the sides, you can, you can do that as the property owner. And, and the only enforcement it can be is that, as the property owner, if they violate that, we can, we can then, the police can have, then have the ability to, to charge them for trespass, once they've been told that they've done something incorrect, okay? But they can't be charged for, for, for the actual act of operating the ATV just being on property and, and performing something on there that's not acceptable to us. So, putting it in the ordinance adds one more flavor, so they could charge them for trespass and for whatever violation amount you put into the ordinance.
See, now, we're supposed to have a public hearing on the Conservation Commission new ordinance.
On the chapter 111, yes, which is why I came to speak to you about that.
Chapter 19 and chapter 111. So, would it be your recommendation that we hold off on that until revisions are made?
Well, we should probably discuss not only this parcel, but the groups of others, which I think came up as an earlier discussion.
Pete mentioned before.
All, all during that timeframe.
Okay, so we'll discuss it then, okay. I'll try to do the public hearing next. You guys are going to be, you'd say you're here all night, go ahead.
And just to expand on what Tim said, too, there is an ordinance, there is an RSA, it's 215A29, which specifically does state well and beyond wetland use, it's just property use. And you go into our Title 11. And it expressly says that there's no use of another property unless you have permission from the landlord. So, the RSA is pretty explicit, and it's not just, it's not just wetlands, it's, it's property.
Okay, so, it sounds like that's going to be referred to in the ordinance. But there has to be some redundancy in making it a town ordinance to be able to give enforcement capability to the police more directly, making it a town?
I think, yeah, I think it gives, regarding which to enforce. I mean, to me, I, I think it gives you options on how you want to approach it. You've got the RSA, or you have it in the ordinance, and I think it's kind of timely that we're doing it, so why not, why not take care of it? And then, that leaves the Conservation Commission and the Police Department options on how they want to handle it, if they have a violator, so.
Now, you'd have to state what the enforcement would be, right?
Yes.
Penalties?
Well, yeah, and how, how they're handled now by Fisher Game is they give you a maximum limit, you know, they're enforceable up to, you know, per violation, they give you a level of, depending if it's willful or if it's by accident.
Okay. Now, can the town ordinance be more strict than the state, in terms of penalty?
On our property, yes.
No. I like your answer, but I don't think it's right. Tom Mahan, would you please stand since, you know this, Tom.
For, for...
For the record, Tom Mahan is responding.
For penalty, I don't believe so, but I think we can, I think we can restrict use more than the RSA.
Well, you might be able to restrict use more, but you can't penalize more.
Right, okay.
Because that, that, your limit for a municipality is $1,000. Whereas the state, I think it's $2,500 or more. Okay, but, anyway.
Yeah, Fisher Game was up to $10,000.
Yeah, or more.
Right, that's essentially.
Okay, so the penalties cannot be more, but the restrictions can be more.
Right, unless you go and get the legislature to change the, the ceiling on the, on the $1,000.
Yeah, fat chance.
I had, I got it done to get to $12,000 back in 1978.
Well, you've got time now, Tom.
Oh, yeah, right.
You know, once a few riders get penalized or get busted, you're, it's going to get out. Yeah.
That's the turn. Bill?
I'm actually, I'm not really concerned about the enforcement piece, because Merrimack Police Department just got a grant to increase their OHRV use at, at other conservation parcels as well. So this would also propose to be a unique opportunity for Merrimack Police Department to utilize their grant monies to, to patrol this property as well, so. I mean, I appreciate the concern that we have about the enforcement down here, but we just, we just approved a grant, and I forget how much money it was, five, what was it, $2,500, Paul?
That grant goes quick.
It goes quick, that's I think, I'm just saying, you know, we've, we've made a commitment to OHRV patrols, so. Not my concern.
The Sklar parcel, parcel in particular, is, the, the type of usage that's going on down there is large vehicles. It's not just ATV and motorcycles, it's Jeeps and trucks, I mean, it's, it's big four-wheel vehicles. So, and it's a rela, you know, as far as we're concerned, it's a relatively small parcel. So, any of the activity that gets curtailed on that area, that word would spread quick, because it's already on websites and such for, here's a great place to go, and it's a, you know...
I, I guess the follow-up question, if somebody were to ride their ATV or what have you, are they, are they entering through Griffin Street, or are they going down by the wastewater treatment plant and entering that, in that area?
Most, most of the entrance that we see is primarily down the roadway, but there is some coming in from Patterson. This is...
Okay.
This, this picture is, it's a, obviously an aerial shot, but it's a little lulled. They, they bermed up the parking area a bit.
Okay.
But there's still activity coming in from that far side and coming in along the river.
So you're saying they're, along the railroad tracks, that kind of thing?
A lot of it's coming in through Griffin, down through, under the bridge.
Interesting, okay.
Okay, I...
These are, these are vehicles.
Yeah, these are...
These aren't, these aren't ATVs, these are, these are vehicles.
Okay, so we're going to be hearing more specific during the public hearing. Tom?
Madam Chair, the agenda item asks for permission to promote, to post signs, and I think that's a great idea. So I moved that the town council grant to Merrimack Conservation Commission any and all permission they need to post signs to protect 3D1-3, and those signs can be on 4D1-10 to limit access from that property, and, and whatever assistance or support they need.
Seconded, motion made by Tom Kenny, seconded by Bill Boyd. Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just for clarifications, the signage?
Yeah, right.
The signage.
Okay, that's 7-0-0. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, what I'd like to do now is, just... What I'd like to do now is just do some recognition, let's catch up on our agenda here, we can start working on the chapters. Recognition of Town Committee Member. The Town Council will present a certificate to the following individual for his service to the Town of Merrimack. That's Dustin. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing it. The Conan? That's what I would have tried. Technology Committee, thank you for your time. He has apparently moved out of town. I know. But we want to thank him for the time that he has provided to the Technology Committee. And also, we have a retirement. Recognition of Retirement of Town Employee. The Town Council will present a recognition award to former master firefighter David A. Trepaney in recognition of his retirement from Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department with almost 30 years of full-time service from November 30th, 1997 to September 30th, 2017. And he was unable to attend this evening, but we'll make sure that he receives the accolades and the plaque and, and all that. Thank you for your service. Okay, let's move to public hearing. Consideration of Changes to Chapter of the Merrimack Town Code. We are going to start with chapter 19, Conservation Commission. Make sure I get, again, this is public hearing, so I'm going to make a paperwork ready. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at 9:44. At least we have, at least we have an audience, usually it's empty at this point. Saying none, I will close this at 9:45. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move chapter 19 to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Peter Albert, to move to the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Jackie Flood is not present at the moment, so it's 6:00. Chapter 27, which is the Heritage Commission. I'm going to, yes. Open at 9:45. We're going to do like we did last time, I was ahead of what the reality of the time was. Any motion?
Public hearing.
That's opening, I just opened at 9:45. Don't try to confuse me, Finley.
You haven't closed it yet, though.
No, I haven't closed it yet, but I'm going to close it right now at 9:46. Entertaining motion.
Madam Chair, move chapter 27 to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Jackie Flood is still not present, so it's 6:00. Okay, chapter 111, Conservation Areas. I'm going to open the public hearing at 9:46. And we do have a person here who wants to provide testimony, it's Tim Tannen.
Yeah, Daniel Upster-Hayway. I'm here because I think we were requested to be here, so, in regards to this. There's a few things that are being changed, I noticed. You know.
Now, my understanding is, just to make sure, the things that are being changed were suggested by your committee to change.
No.
No?
No, no, these were changes we made last meeting.
Oh, this particular one, that's right, I'm sorry. You have to, right, that one thing, sorry.
So there's two pieces being eliminated. One of them is overnight camping, which I don't believe we have any heartburn over only because there was no rules and process in order to do it and, and a whole host of other reasons, so. The other one is a, an adjustment in, in around ATV or off, I should say OHRV to be more specific and more proper, OHRV use on the conservation properties. And it, it eliminated a section that get into penalties because that's actually covered in the, in the, in number two above that. So I'm looking at 111-1F2 and 3, 3 being eliminated. So what's interesting for all of you to realize is OHRVs covers a whole host of vehicles, but it does not include snowmobiles, just so you're aware of that. At the, at this time, I don't think we have an issue with snowmobiles except at the Wildcat Falls property, which is, I believe, covered by this ordinance as well. So every now and then, we have some issues with local riders going out there and not staying on trails, but venturing off and creating new trails, so. But that ebbs and flows depending on who's living where and when, so. Because the state property next to us has no restrictions, sometimes the border between them is not very distinct, so.
Especially in the winter.
At least, at least that's the argument that we hear, so. But in a larger sense, I, I believe Counselor Albert brought up the fact that chapter 111 covers five properties, I believe, or six parcels.
Six.
Six, yeah. Nowhere near the number of parcels that are either owned by the Conservation Commission or owned by the town. And for the town, some of them are deeded to conservation and some of them are just, you know, managed as conservation properties through the Conservation Commission. Some of them are very large parcels like Horse Hill and Greater Woods, Fields Farm, the Wasserman Conservation Area. All those parcels, you know, with those general conservation areas, whether they're town-owned or commission-owned, are not covered by this chapter. Yeah?
Peter, go ahead.
Tim, should they be covered on this chapter?
So, so it gets a little sticky because you get into deeds and restrictions that were imposed by deeds. So technically, you can enforce those restrictions by deeds, but basically, the only enforcement is trespass. You have to tell them, get off your property, kind of like the earlier discussion, when the large four-by-fours and Jeeps go out on that parcel, 4D10, it's owned by the town or the sclare parcel, four, three, whatever its designation is, by posting it, those four-by-fours aren't covered by RSA 215, which covers OHRVs. So therefore, you can't use 215 against them, you can only use trespass against them, so. So back to your question, should they be covered? Because of all the different deed restrictions and things that have been enacted through master plans and definitive plans and all that, I don't think it's as cut and dry as the, as the list that's here. You might argue that this chapter gets into times of use. Basically, it's, it's, you know, dawn to dusk. But we don't have issues on some of the larger parcels, so do we want to restrict those to dawn to dusk as well? But if we just throw them in here, we would be putting all these other restrictions on them. There's a, there's, there's the discharge of, of a weapon in here. I figure, I think they use the term discharge of air-powered and, and others. Well, we don't have that restriction currently at Horse Hill and Greater Woods and stuff like that. Do we want to enforce that here? So, so I guess really what I get, I'm getting to is chapter 111, I believe, should be expanded to cover most of our parcels, but in the expansion, there also needs to be adjustments or where we'd have different classes of restrictions based on the parcel, which can get a little messy. And we're talking probably 30 to 40 parcels altogether if you pull them all in between the town-owned and the commission-owned. So, so that's why, over the last three years, and you'll probably hear it in January from Gage, for the fourth time, we're, we've been advocating for a rewrite of chapter 111, but it's going to require some effort and some help from town staff. It's more than an effort than I or the members of the committee, volunteer members of the commission could do in the evenings to put it together. Because you have to research the parcels, understand how they were purchased, what restrictions were imposed through their purchase, if there were any, and then try and group them and decide what you want to do. You, you know, you have, you have to put out the options and then as a town council, you'll have to decide, do you want to impose restrictions that weren't there? In some parcels, it might make sense. Others, maybe not so. So I, I think it gets a little messy.
Paul?
Just kind of spitballing a little bit with this because of the properties that are there. What happens if we say, areas designated as conservation areas shall consist of the following listed in Attachment A? And I think if we can break them up in Attachment A and actually have each section of parcels, like Horse Hill Nature Preserve might be a separate section in A versus, you know, the six or seven properties and break them up that way in, in an attachment instead of trying to list each parcel in the ordinance, and then all of a sudden, we get a new one, then we got to rewrite the ordinance if there's, and in Attachment A, the Attachment A can always come in front of the council again and then get changed without going through the ordinance process. And would that, I know we have to rewrite it, but would that be beneficial and more helpful that you break it out as these parcels are nothing and then these parcels are, you know, like Horse Hill Nature Preserve?
I, I'm not sure if you can, if you can enforce it on parcels that aren't specifically called out in the ordinance.
But there would be in the attachment.
Then the attachment becomes essentially a part of the ordinance.
Right. It's like what we used to do with the fees. We took the fees out and the fees are a separate schedule.
So, Tim, are you suggesting that for the time being, this is okay, but there should be a deliberate timetable and action to really revise chapter 111 with guidance from the staff?
Exactly.
Legal or whatever.
Yeah, because it will require some legal activities, you know, at least review, but there's, there's a bunch of research that needs to happen. And that's where it gets hard. And then, then of course, it's grouping and then when it comes here, you all might want to make the divvy a little bit different, I don't know, but.
Okay, could I ask, and I'll open it up to the other counselors too. Could I ask between now and January for the Conservation Commission just to give an outline as to, not the answers, but the questions that should be asked? Research needs to be done on the deeds.
Right, right.
Groupings might need to be accomplished based upon similarities in parcels. Those sort of global issues that as a council, we might not even think of to ask, but you would, which would guide us in terms of guiding the staff and/or legal counsel to be able to start the process. Does that sound like a reasonable?
Yeah, we can, we can basically lay out our project proposal.
If that's what you want to call it, sure.
Which means we won't be ready in January.
Well, whatever.
The proposal will be, but.
The proposal could be ready in January, yes.
Right, for, for us to be able to consider. I mean, it can be later, I'm just saying that. Is that a reasonable request to the Conservation Commission at some point in the future?
Yeah, I would say during Q1 of next calendar year is, is certainly reasonable.
Okay. And that would address some, and that would express some of the concerns that you have with this and the absence of ordinances for the others.
Yeah, it, it would. Now, you realize I'm only an alternate member, so.
Who, who now can't move out of town and you're, wherever you're going.
That's right.
Okay, Pete?
So, Tim, just with the purchase of the sclare property, should that be on this list or is that one we have to hold off on?
I would recommend holding off. I would, I would recommend leaving the list as it is. Most of these parcels on the list are in neighborhoods or adjacent to neighborhoods. You know, that's kind of why they have the restrictions they have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gage, you want to say anything about what you're trying to skip out? Oh, he does want to say something.
He just doesn't want to sit next to Tim. He wants the spitballs coming in.
You know, Gage Perry, Merrimack Conservation Commission, we subscribe. As we pursue this activity, often we come across parcels that, you know, we, we purchased directly and parcels that have become, almost bequeathed to us from the town as management. We're not going, do you want us to look at just the Merrimack Conservation Commission properties? Do you want us to be reviewing all the properties that are under our management?
Yes.
Because, yeah, there's, there's a number, there's, that list grows, you were talking somewhere 180 something parcels, individual parcels. I mean, you know, as a conglomerate, they're, they're large, but, you know, Greater Woods is 20 different parcels.
Right, but Greater Woods should be Greater Woods, even though it's multiple parcels.
Right, and this perfect example is there's town, you know, Greater Woods is a perfect example. There's town property that we manage, there's property we purchased, and there's school property that we manage, so.
Should they all be under the same ordinance?
Exactly.
Well, the school property can't be, but.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, so 30 acres of Greater Woods is a school, is an easement granted to Concom for management.
See, that's the complexity we need to.
Yes. That's where, it gets, it gets tricky.
Devotion to a jury.
Okay, but you, you understand the complexities?
Yeah.
And maybe you have a suggestion of how we should.
Yeah, but in the meantime, we're going to.
In the meantime, this is, okay.
Passes on.
Okay, so we did have, okay, may I close this? We actually used up some time. So we'll close the public hearing at 9:57.
Madam?
Yes.
Madam Chair, move chapter 111 to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Dan Dwyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying none, 700. Okay, chapter 142, Parks and Recreation Area, open at 9:58. Any, saying none, I'm going to close it at 9:58.
Madam Chairman, move chapter 142 to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, 700. Chapter 193, Welfare Guidelines, open at 9:59. Let's get ahead of ourselves. Oh, we're already, okay, saying none. Close at 10 o'clock.
Madam Chair, move chapter 193 to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 700. Okay, let's go down to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, move the consent agenda.
Ah, nice. Do we have to do it individually?
No.
It's an upper-down vote.
But we have one or two, we have introduction to chapter, we have two.
Just read the chapters in the consent agenda.
Correct. Okay, let me read this for the record. Consideration of Changes to Chapters of Merrimack Town Code, Final Reading. The Town Council will consider the acceptance of recommended changes to chapter 11, 79, 139, 158, and 178 of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to charter article room 105. And the motion was made by Bill Boyd to accept the consent agenda, second by Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 700. The second item on the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yep. You're, you're testing me, aren't you?
I'm just.
I had a lot of coffee, I'm still awake. Introduction to Chap.
I asked to move the consent agenda, the entire consent.
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Okay, but I did not read the chapter one.
Ah, okay.
Town Council will consider the acceptance of chapter one, General Provisions of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to charter article 5.
As moved.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying none, 700. Let's move down, we'll probably hopefully be just as quick. New Business, number three, Consideration of Changes to Chapters of the Merrimack Town Council, First Reading, Chapter 81, which is Water Lines. Any, I'm trying to have to turn to my own page here. Okay, any questions?
There is one, one change that we would like to bring to the council.
Yes, Kyle? Kyle Fox.
In chapter 81, we are recommending just one change in the ordinance, and that change is regarding the amount of compensation that MBD would reimburse the town for projects, for town projects where we have to move their water lines. What happens in public right-of-ways for most utilities or actually all other utilities, if there's conflicts with the utilities and, and the work we're performing, the utilities are required to move their utilities out of our way to, so we can perform our work and then move them back afterwards at no cost to the town. and then move them back afterwards at no cost to the town. In 1998, this ordinance was set up where any town project, Marama Village District, would reimburse the town up to $1,000 for any project.
Well, that's three, three buckets of dirt.
Yes, in talking with, with Paul, we agreed that it was appropriate to raise that amount. We, in trying to figure out what the appropriate amount was, and I'll certainly look for guidance from you folks, what we tried to balance is that when, when we do projects, it's the entire tax base that pays for the project versus the relocation of utilities would be borne by the utility payers, in this case, the MBD rate payers, which are also all Marama residents, but not the entire tax base. So we wanted to be fair to the entire tax base. On the other hand, we don't wanna get into a situation where we necessarily put the full burden on, on the village district, because they're the utility that is, is in our way for all of our projects. And we wouldn't wanna get into a situation where our projects are held up because they can't get funding to, to do the work that's required. In light of that, we, we're suggesting an amount of $25,000 as a cap on reimbursement for projects. And in the little handout I gave you, I kinda referenced some of the projects we had done. Turkey Hill Road, most recently. Turkey Hill Road ended up costing us nothing because of the ARID grant. Bean, Bean Road Bridge, the town's cost was 47,000. It was a much bigger cost, but the state picked up 80% of it. McGaw Bridge Road Bridge, the cost to the town was 7,700. The Amherst Road Box Culver, which was not a matching project, the town footed the whole $37,000 bill.
And that was an MVD involved. Wasn't there a pipe there we had to move?
Yeah, all of these are because we had to relocate their, their utility lines.
But I remember Amherst, that was a surprise to us.
Nope, that's the, the next one you're.
Oh, the next one, okay.
Yeah, so that, that one, the Box Culver project was the one further down in the hollow.
Yes, okay.
So the last two in that list are the most recent culver projects of this year. And, and those were bid out differently, those were lump sum bids versus individual line items. So I don't have an exact amount of what we'll pay for those, but they're both greater than $10,000.
But to bill MVD, you would have to have an exact amount. You can't just say greater than 10,000, right? I mean.
Right, if, if, if the amount was raised to 25,000, then we would do an accounting of exactly what it cost. In this case, because we are, we're working under the existing ordinance, finance is gonna send them a bill for $1,000 for each of the projects.
Okay.
Okay, so Chapter 81, Section 2B is where you're saying we need to change it. Is that correct?
That's our suggestion, yes, thank you.
Finley?
I was gonna say, thanks, Eileen, I don't know why I was, thanks, Nat. I just wondered, one, have you chatted with MVD?
I haven't.
Okay, and number two, Turkey Hill Road Bridge and McBean Road Bridge cost over 300,000, well, 300,000 bucks almost apiece, more for one, a little less for the other, to move the water line?
Correct.
How much the Bean Road Bridge, if you know off the top of your head, how much that project costs us?
The Bean Road Bridge was 1.3 million.
And to move the damn water line, oh my God.
Yeah.
Okay, that's crazy money. I mean, the project was big, I can appreciate that, but.
The, the particular problem with Bean Road, and that one was frustrating for us in particular. That water line went in in the 1990s. And the plan was for MVD to put it on the east side of the bridge entirely, which would have, it would not have been in our way. What they ended up doing is that they put it diagonally underneath the pipe bridge that was there, which put it exactly in our way. So we had to temporarily bypass the water first, and then we had to directionally bore a new water line, which is why the cost was so great.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. It just seemed without that, I thought it was digging it out and putting a new line in.
Right, yeah, it was, it was a big undertaking.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Kyle.
Okay, now, in order to revise this, we have to have a motion, right? To accept the.
No, we'll just move. You, you, the, the change is already written in there for the $25,000. If you get, if the council wants to move that forward, all they have to do is move it to a public hearing. If they wanna make a change back to a different amount, they would make that motion.
Any other questions about the recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at 81-2B, and I'm trying to understand the markings that are on here. And I, I don't, I'm lost. There's this, a mark out of a 1 and then 1,000 in the second line there. And then in the third line, there's a mark out of a 1 and then 1,000 listed there. And I thought, and later on, there's a mark out of 11,000 and then a 25,000. What are we really doing? Are we replacing all of them with 25,000 or?
No, just the, the second two numbers where you see the bold 25,000.
What's the first, more than 1,000 in water line relocation costs? Is that what it's trying to say?
Yes.
What did it say before?
The, in, in each of the four instances, the, the language is confusing in, in here.
Amen.
Yes, I didn't write the original language, thank goodness, but.
Well, did we fix the language? I mean, this is our chance, right?
Yeah, I, I can certainly try to, before the public hearing, make the language more clear. We can, we can try and rewrite more of the paragraph. I was trying to keep the change as simple as possible, and I probably shouldn't.
That first one, you marked out a 1 and then, and then left a 1,000, so it, unless it used to say 11,000.
No, it, it always said 1,000. I'm not sure why that, why that printed that way.
I'm not sure either, thank you. But it wants to say 1,000 there.
It does. It, it currently does, and it wants to say 1,000.
So, any project which costs the village district more than 1,000, the Marama Village District shall pay for the first 25,000? That just, that's bizarre language. I don't get it.
I, I will try and revise that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so can we, how do we wanna say this? Move to the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I would move Chapter 81 to a public hearing, subject to the appropriate language changes made by DPW Director Kyle Fox.
Which will be, will receive prior to the public hearing.
Prior to the public hearing.
Okay. Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, 700. Okay, Chapter 163, solid waste facility.
The changes to the solid waste ordinance are purely clerical. For clarification, the first one in Section 3H, we've replaced the word landfill with solid waste because the landfill is no longer in operation. In 4A-3, we added language that says current transfer station. And that's referencing the decals to just add clarification that a current decal is required. And we added in, again in 4A-3, to add the Public Works Administration Office as a place residents can pick up a decal.
Okay, any motions, questions?
Madam Chair, move Chapter 163 to a public hearing.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Dan Dwyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 700. Chapter 167, storm water management standards.
We're recommending no changes at this time.
No changes? Just a clarity question, Madam Chair.
Let's go right ahead, Mr. Boyd.
Kyle, any impact with the, with the whole MS4 thing that we're dealing with right now that would impact this or something to revisit down the road?
No, the reason we're recommending no changes at this time is because the new permit is still pending. And once that is approved and we go through the NOI process, the notice intent to, to do tasks under the new permit, that's when we'll have a whole bunch of changes for this ordinance.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
Motion?
Madam Chair, move Chapter 167 to the, to a public hearing.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Dan Dwyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, 700. Chapter 169, streets and sidewalks.
We're recommending one change in this, in this code. That's in chat, in Chapter 169-4. The ordinance currently allows residents and businesses to push snow from their driveways across the traveled way to the other side of the road. And we're proposing to restrict that allowance. There's a number of reasons why we'd want to restrict. Go ahead, Finch, I'm sorry, I thought you were almost, go ahead. There's a number of reasons we want, we'd like to change that. Most notably, when snow is plowed across the road, it, it leaves an icy patch on the road, which is a danger to, to motorists. Plowing the road, plowing across the road also can leave a bulge in the snowbank that through heavy winters like we had a couple of years ago, can really impact the, the width of the travel lanes. And when we go out with our trucks to, to bench the snowbanks, we get to those compacted snow areas where, where the snow is bulging out and we can't get it out. We would actually have to send the loader out to, to be able to take the snow out of those snowbanks. And the, the third one is a lot of people do their driveways after the storm is over. And, and what happens a fair amount of time is we've put out our final treatment material, whether it's salt, sand salt mix, or even sand. And they plow across the, the road and they, not only do they put frozen material back on the road, but they're scraping off the material we just put out there. So those are the reasons we're proposing the change.
Okay.
Kyle, I get where you're coming from. And this, I, I think that I read this, and there's a lot of people that do that currently in town that push across. And it's, that would significantly impact people, impeding them from doing it. And I think there are some places that they actually have to because they're, they don't have a lot of places to put the snow. So I'm just a little bit concerned about that. And there's just a follow-up question to that is, if I wanna push, if, prior to this rule you're, you're suggesting, if I wanted to push my snow across the street, do I have to have the property owner's permission to do that on, across the street?
If you were pushing it onto their property, you would. But typically, by the time someone is plowing their driveway, our snowbank is already there. So they're just, it's staying within the right-of-way.
So we do that, but we have permission from the neighbor to do it.
But you won't be able to now.
Tom?
Thank you. I, I find this way overly restrictive, especially the way it's written. If your problem is pushing snow across with a plow or something, a commercial guy that's clearing somebody's driveway, maybe you could suggest that. But to even talk about throwing snow across, and, and the word is wrong, it should be thrown, not throw. But that's just crazy. I mean, I, I oftentimes go across the street with my snow blower and clear out part of the street because I'm trying to clear out the end of my driveway. And you're complaining about me impacting the street, yet you guys fill in my driveway every damn snowstorm. And.
Five times after you've done it.
Three or four times after I've done it. So I, I don't think there's a tit-for-tat going on here. And I, I appreciate where you're coming from, and I understand the problem. And I'd love to try and solve the, the piled-up bulging snow and say that they have to clear it away from the edge of the street or something like that. But, but I think this is too restrictive, the way it's written, and doesn't take into account just common sense. And we have to be able to clear our driveways and stuff like that. And to say you can't even throw it across, to me, sounds absurd.
Well, and, and we put this in knowing that there was gonna be pushback, excuse the pun.
We're pushing, I'm pushing.
It's a difficult issue, it is. And, and we do respect, you know, the, the needs of the residents. You know, we all do our own driveways, and we all know what it's like in the winter. We were putting this forward as, as a public safety item. And, and, and it's hard to strike a balance with what's allowed and what isn't.
It's, I can speak to the difficulty of it. One year, and it only happened one year, my neighbor's plow guy pushed the snow into my front yard. And it did pack, as you're speaking about. And my, I tried to get it back with my snow blower, it's packed so hard, I couldn't do it. And in the meantime, the mail would come in, have to back up to pull out because it was out into the right-of, not, not just the right-of-way on, on the inside of the curb, but in the road, it was, so, I don't know how big of a problem it is because I, I haven't witnessed it, but I, that was a real issue for that one year. They haven't done it since, but it was a headache that year.
One consideration you may make, and, and I'm sort of punting this and hoping you guys will make the decision, but we did have conversations when we were drafting this language. Do we, do we say just for main roads versus subdivision roads? Do we draw that clarification? And in the end, we, we, we proposed the more restrictive one in, in favor of having this discussion.
Pete, did you wanna say, Pete, or Bill?
I live on Chopper Road, and, you know, Chopper Road is only so big of paved surface. Yet, when you look at, at any map, any plan, technically, the right-of-way goes off the paved surface. It's on the, it's on the side of the road and includes a couple of trees and includes my mailbox and my neighbor's mailbox. You know, in every snowstorm, I'm out there on the street clearing away my, the snow away from the mailbox so that the mail, the mail can be delivered. So technically, looking at this particular road, I'm gonna be, you know, gonna be in violation because I'm running my snow machine down the surface of the road to, to clean my mailbox.
But you plowed it in your yard.
No, no, I'm plowing it, I'm plowing it into the woods.
I get the dilemma in putting something together here that's reasonable, I get that dilemma. But it can be a problem.
But it begs the, why is it in here anyway?
Pardon me?
Why is it in here anyway?
Because you have a big lot of snow out there.
Even making the old language, why was the old language in there anyway? It's, it's, it's less restrictive, but it, it raises the same questions that we're talking about right now.
Yeah, Pete?
Yeah, I agree with my fellow counselors. Kyle, is there, because you know there always is, and I get it. And I think I've mediated some disputes within the town too. I think you and I worked a couple of them together, the snow plowing issues. And there always is that one person who pushes it out and believes that half the road blocked. Is there some happy medium to address that where if, if, if a violation is cited, rather than just say, no, nothing, you know?
As the language currently is.
You know, it says that.
It says that they're required to keep it clean. So I, yes, action could be taken in, in that sense. The exact language is, any remaining on the surface of the traveled portion of the street must be cleaned up immediately. So certainly enforcement action could occur based on the existing language if they didn't clean it up. That doesn't address the, the loss of material and, and, you know, scraping our, our post-treatment materials off and the hazard of, of plow trucks plowing across the road in low visibility situations as well.
Well, would we, we benefit then to change the violation a penalty and raise that so that if you had to come out with a truckload of salt and pay a guy an hour to plow it all back and everything else, the penalty would fit the violation? We would be better off that way, so.
If that's the council's will, we can certainly do that.
That's $100 each day of violation.
So does this mean that the people who hire somebody to plow their driveway where they're, where they're going down the driveway and they cross the street and they adjust their plow and they come back up the driveway, they're technically gonna? I'd take that out. I would just leave the first sentence, no person shall place, all the way towards this, block sideways or hydrants, period. I would just leave that. I think it gets the point across that we're trying to tell people, don't obstruct the streets. You know, people paying, people are paying their tax dollars for Kyle and his team to treat the roads. And they gotta, if they gotta go out there and multiply treat the roads and then come back to, come back to us, and they haven't, in the six years that I've been on this council, they haven't come back looking for additional money for salt. So they've got new technology, they know how to manage the salt, the, the treatment systems that they're using on the roads. But they, you know, like I said, in the last six years, they haven't gone back to us, put on the off-chance. I, I certainly would be willing to give them the appropriation because that's what people are expecting to, to treat the roads.
Pete, did you wanna say something?
I, I mean, you know, I agree with Bill. I don't think we need to put this amended language in. And I agree with Tom, it's too restrictive. But I wouldn't have a problem amending a violation to $500 because there's a lot of things in here I see that are fines, that, I mean, rubbish on streets and things like that in this code that the state fined for that. for that can reach up to $400. So, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem amending the amount of fine.
$500?
Yeah, that's.
Yep.
I'll throw you a cigarette, bud, out the window.
Hundred, I don't smoke.
Well, I'm just thinking, if he has to bring a guy out or something, I just try to reach a happy medium here.
I mean, I think $100 would make the point.
$100 gets the point.
That would make the point, I think. It's a matter of doing it.
Well, I guess you have, when you, when you have a fine, and it goes to court, it's negotiable, so I wouldn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if someone would receive a $500 fine, and they went to court, you guys are all looking at me funny. This is a rookie counselor they get.
But if I got a fine for $100, that would make the point to me.
A negotiated plea could be something to the effect of, well, the offense cost us more like the amount of 100 or 150.
See, I wouldn't even think of negotiating.
But then it would have to go to court in order to negotiate.
Yeah, well, that's more than a $100.
Yeah, how much would that cost?
Question, how much is too much of snow? Like, you'll see all kinds of variations.
How much is too much snow?
Yeah.
Well, it is.
Oh, I think, I think Dan would answer that for us.
I don't care about this one.
Because, because he's not going to be around to think about this one.
No, I mean, to obstruct, to put off of your own property onto the street, what would you consider obstruction?
It's a really hard question to answer, because every driveway is different, you know, it's different roads.
You don't have to sit down a long more, you sound like.
The situation is if we have to send equipment out to take care of a problem, that's something we'd rather not do. I don't know how to solve it.
I really do, honestly.
You know, because it becomes such a monster, you know.
I'm going to just sit down a long more.
Right, so I don't know, I don't, I have no suggestion, I just.
Okay, so let's make a decision, we can mull around this forever.
I move to leave it as it was.
As proposed?
No, as it was.
As it was.
As it was.
Okay, motion by, by Tom Koenig to return to its original, right?
Pre-azial, yes.
And second by Dan Dwyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, seven, I'm sorry, six, one, zero, Bill Boyd in opposition.
Madam Chair, move Chapter 169 to a public hearing.
That's, oh, I thought that's just what we did.
No.
Okay, that's right, we revised it, thank you. Okay, Bill Boyd, second by Pete Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, seven, zero, zero. Chapter 183 of Vehicles and Traffic.
There's a number of changes we're proposing in Chapter 183, most of them are in Section 31, which is just codifying stop signs on new subdivision roads that have been installed since the last time we went through this process.
Just updating.
Two years ago. The last two, in Section 33, we're proposing to add the Madeline Bennett traffic signal into the code.
Is Madeline Bennett part of our road yet? It's not an official road yet, is it?
It's not our traffic light.
It's the signal.
We never accepted that traffic light.
Right.
That's what it says.
Exactly.
It says that.
Right here, I was wondering, Kyle, has, did that, did that light meet warrants, or I know that, as I recall, there's certain, a list of a dozen things that have, at least one of those criteria has to be met before you can put a traffic signal or different types of things in. Did it meet any of the, do they call them warrants?
They do call them warrants.
Yeah, did it meet any of the warrants?
I don't have the answer to that. No, I can certainly get that.
Last time they talked to us about it, they said no.
Right, that's my memory.
Which is why the town council never accepted it.
Correct.
If you could check for them, I'd be curious.
I can.
Because that would be important, because my understanding as well, and I think it was from you, possibly your predecessor, was that by accepting something that did not meet any warrants, any of the warrants, it becomes a potential liability to the town.
Correct.
And so that's why that, for me, is a little bit, it's important to not.
I can certainly check on that, and I can check with legal counsel as well, to see about the liability issue. The reason I put it in, because in practicality, we are maintaining the light when the, when the bulbs blow out, we are replacing them. The school district isn't. So, you know, it, I was trying to, to clean up what exists in practicality.
No, I appreciate that.
So in the meantime, should it be there until we find out, or not?
No, it should not be there, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with you, Tom.
Can it be removed at the, well, we can put it back into the public hearing, nevermind.
I agree with Tom.
And that's the 33, right?
33, yeah. Yeah, Chapter 33.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to not accept that, right?
Move to not accept the change to Section 33.
So moved.
So moved.
Tom Koenig, second by?
Seconded.
Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven, zero, zero.
Madam Chair, question. At the end of this package for 183, there's a picture of a boat, is this Dan Dwyer's future boat, or?
I'm not sure how that got attached.
Okay, I got, I got, I got two pictures, two boats on my cap.
There's two pictures, yeah.
Two pictures.
A boat? Whose boat is that?
That must have come from another.
It's going to be Dan Dwyer's new boat.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, there's a photo.
Show on the fence.
Is this Sunset Drive, maybe?
Yes, it is. Thank you to Paul for reminding me, I didn't realize the pictures got included, but that's to address our proposed change in Section 36.
To avoid parking, so that that boat's not there?
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's the, we, when we did the Sunset Shores project last year, we built three new pump stations. One of them is located in the, at the end of the right-of-way in Sunset, Sunset Drive. Since we put it in, we've had some issues with cars parking in the way, particularly where that boat is, the gates open right where that boat is for our access to the pump station. So we're proposing a 40 feet from the front of the fence line of the pump station, 40 feet away from there would be the no parking zone.
And will the, will the boat owner be notified that we're making this change?
Absolutely. We've tried to make contact with the boat owner to get him to move the boat, and haven't been successful.
So you've made a reasonable opportunity to reach out to the owner to explain the situation?
We have.
Okay.
Who owns that property?
I think it just recently sold, it was Mr. Collette.
So, so that's not the town property where that boat is?
The, yes, the boat is in the right-of-way. The property owner that owns the boat, the abutter, is that other parcel.
Okay, so if they, if they don't move it, and it's on where it doesn't blow, we can, we can remove it for them, is that?
We could, yeah.
Let's see.
Right now, the way the code is, outside of the winter parking ban, we don't really have any enforcement to remove vehicles from the right-of-way, except during the winter parking ban, or where it's posted, no parking. So this is a means to just make sure that people can't park there.
And they wonder why policies become pages and pages, Paul?
If we're done with that one, I got a late ad, I got one later today, page 30, Section, I believe it's Section 35, 183 is 35, if you go to page 30, it says McGowan Street is a one-way. The police department has come back and says that's no longer necessary to be a one-way between the hours of 2:00 PM and 3:00 PM. A matter of fact, by having it a one-way, it has created other problems going down Woodbury through closed parking lots, and there's been problems cars running down.
Unintended consequences.
Unintended consequences, so the police department has asked, because there are sidewalks now on McGowan Street, to remove that restriction.
Positive.
Who'd you talk to, Paul?
So again, say the number.
Page 30, McElwain Street?
Yes, page, page 30, McGowan Street, yeah, McElwain Street, that, to remove that, it's no longer going to be a one-way.
So that would need to be another revision.
Right.
Does anyone want to make a motion to remove that?
Actually, we can move, I don't know that we have to, do you need a motion to remove that, or?
No, as long as we'll make the changes for the public hearing, if that's amenable to the council.
I mean, make a motion?
Why don't we do a motion?
I move that we remove the restriction on McElwain Street, on page 30 of 31.
Motion made by Tom Koenig. Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Seven, zero, zero.
Just in the nick of time, I got it together in my mind, so I'm good with my vote.
So just for my clarification, we're voting to remove that one-way traffic.
And we already did the other one, too. That's the reason why I did the vote, we already made a change, which we took a vote on. So we might as well be consistent, make a vote on the second one.
I agree.
So now we are going to vote on the acceptance with those changes.
Madam Chair, move Chapter 130, 183 with the proposed amendments to a public hearing.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Seven, zero, zero. Okay, thank you very much, Kyle.
Kyle, thank you.
I would like to table the minutes for October 12. Plus, we have to do Dave, uh, Dan. What, isn't it Dave?
Motion to table the October 12 minutes.
Second.
Okay, Bill Boyd, second by Peter Albert, all those in favor?
Second.
Okay, now, now we're down to it. Okay, recognition of Town Counselor, Dan Dwyer.
Shouldn't it be recognition and roast of Town Counselor Dan Dwyer?
First of all, would you like to say something, Tom, you've been sitting here for a while? I'm going to give you a first crack. I got to find my little notes.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you very much. Yeah, I did show up tonight primarily to address the departure of my former colleague, Mr. Dwyer. It's been a lot of, sorry to see you go, Dan, glad you got rid of your house in five days. Honestly, truthfully, okay, it's, you know, of course, if the house was built in 1800s like mine was, it may not have been that lucky, but anyway, it's been great serving with you, it really has. You know, you've been a real good influence on the, on the council, and I see there's no members of the National Guard here tonight either. I'm surprised that they aren't here to say.
We tried, we tried.
Yeah, and that's the, the sort of consequential, inconsequential humor you brought to the council at times, okay? And, you know, and you've been a good contributor, and it's been, and it's been satisfying. And a lot of people say it's been a lot of fun, but that's what they, I think that's what I mean when I say it's been a lot of fun, because you got a lot of satisfaction out of, out of the things that we did together, and how we tried to get this, you know, get things going again, and when you look at the accomplishments of the council, since you've been on there, it's a pretty admirable record for the group, both past and present. So, you know, it's really an honor to have served with you, and wish you all the best of luck, enjoy the heat, and the continuing, at least category three hurricanes are coming through Florida, you know, but there's no global warming, of course. Anyway, so best of luck to you and your family, and enjoy the, enjoy your, enjoy the trip. Take care.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, traffic, should I do this very last?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Comments from the council? Oh, oh, Finley has something here.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I did, my brother is a good friend of a three-star general in Washington DC who ran the Air and Army National Guard in Massachusetts, and he's now doing it at federal level.
You Mike?
So I, I thought that I was going to have a letter from him, but I didn't get it in time, so, in the meantime, I did go up to the New Hampshire National Guard facility up in Manchester, and told them, thanked them for their opportunities to come and help you out when you called on the guard for accessing, you know, gaining access to polling places and so on. And so they, they hooked me up with your National Guard T-shirt, Dan, and, and your hat, so.
Oh, look at that.
I just want to pass that on to you, I should have had you wear it all evening, but.
I will wear, I will wear it proudly, thank you, Finley.
So, and now, real quickly, because it is a late evening, I, a few weeks ago, when Dan told me he was moving, it was like a girlfriend dumped me, I was pretty crushed. And I, when Dan came on, he knows, he, we had a conversation pretty quickly after he came on board, about my concerns with him being there because of the way things had run for a little bit, and some people liked it that way, and some people didn't, I, and I was concerned that it was going to be a perpetuation of difficult things for, you know, for my, when I was serving in those years, but Dan, very quickly became obvious to me, he was a great asset to the council, and I've been, I've definitely enjoyed having you on board, and it's, in spite of Mike's thoughts, I, you've done a wonderful job in understanding the needs of the community, as well as, you know, the desire to try and keep our tax rate in check, and I'm going to miss you, man, so I appreciate everything you've done, and we'll have to keep in touch for sure.
Next, anybody?
Bill? It's very difficult, Dan, not going to lie to you. I was thinking about, what could I say to you that might make you laugh? And all I could think of was the old Virginia Slims ad that said, "You've come a long way, baby." From the, from the full page, black and white, I'm against everything, to having an impact on the dog park, Wasserman Park, paving, being a key component of bringing Merrimack Business Expo to town, and Merrimack Rocks. You care about this community a lot, and there's been a lot of things that you've done where you vocalize things, and I also know that there have been things where you haven't been publicly vocal, you've just quietly, you know, lurked in the background, did what needed to be done to make Merrimack a great place to, to work, live, and raise a family. So, thank you so much for what you've done, from when we first got to know each other on the EDCAC, back in, what, 2007, 2008, to you and I on the council for the last six years, the advice that you provided to me and to my wife on the adoption of our daughter Jade, invaluable, I'll never forget it, but above all, I consider you to be a very good friend of mine, a very close friend of mine, and I am not looking forward to you driving south on 95 anytime soon, to be perfectly candid with you. So I wish you and Julie the best of health and happiness down in Florida, but if I could vote against your resignation tonight, I would be voting against it, and that is the god-honest truth. So I am going to miss you, and I thank you very much for your counsel and your friendship throughout the years. Thanks.
Anyone else? Peter?
Dan, it's been short and sweet, but I've appreciated getting to know you as a fellow counselor, and, you know, your advice, you know, and, and your candor, I appreciate it, and I appreciate your friendship. Good luck.
Jackie?
Yes, yeah, Dan, I'm going to miss you, too, as you know, we came in the same night, and I have listened to you every time you've spoken, you always say your piece, and I like that, and I'll miss it.
I'm going to go last, Tom.
How to start without repeating everything that's been said is very difficult, Dan, you've been an amazing asset to this town and this community, and while you have been controversial in many places, you've also been a staunch supporter of what's right or what should be, and I commend you for that. As Bill said, back in the days when you ran your full-page ad, many of us were a little bit shocked and awed, if you will, which I think is what you did that for. But when you finally ran and got on the council, I have to admit, like Finley, I was amazed at, at how effective you've been, how ingratiating you've been with all of us, how valued you've been to the town. To try and list all of the things that you've been a major impact on would be tragic for me to do. Bill's already mentioned a couple of them, like your, your push for Wasserman Park and things of that nature, and you work with the expo. For all of those things that you've done, all the times that you've supported me, all the times you've been in opposition to my thoughts on the council, I want to thank you for being open and honest, and being there, helping us to. for being open and honest and being there, helping us to understand when it's appropriate to be honest and functionally honest with people and when it might not be, so that we can best forward the town's interest. And I know that you've always had the town's interest in heart, and I appreciate that effort and all of the things that you've done, and I wish you the very best in your future endeavors.
Last but not least, I actually wrote the things down. I can't find the paper now, but that's all right. One, I'm going to miss not having to use my motherly stare, looking over at you and Eileen going, "Behave yourselves." We, everyone knows my mother. I will miss that. No, it isn't effective at all. I understand that. But I do appreciate a lot of things. I think even when we have disagreed, I think there's always been a professionalism about you, and you do represent a population of citizens within this town that need to be spoken for, and you have an occasion, when we weren't really happy about it, you have voiced that. But I've also respected that because you've always been very honest. You never have to worry about what you're thinking. You're very blatant about it. You're not very discreet. You just say it. But that's... No. But see, but that's, but that's the thing I have admired about you. But at the same time, you and I can totally disagree, and five minutes later, "How you doing?" And there's absolutely no intimacy, and that is something to be respected, and I thank you for that. All I can do is wish you, part of me is jealous, because come midwinter, when we're dealing with a freezing cold, you're going to be...I know downwind, you're going to send us an email going, "How, gee, it's 75 degrees, and I'm out, Myla and I are having a drink. How is it up there in the four feet of snow?" And I hopefully will remember that, and come the beginning of August, I'll write to you, "Gee, it's a nice 75 degrees, and is it 120 down there?" So, it's, anyway. But I want you to be able to enjoy that, maintain your health, enjoy your retirement, and wish you the best. You and Julie. And I'm going to officially read this plaque to you. Presented to Daniel Dwyer in recognition of the dedicated service you have given for more than seven years as a town counselor for the town of Merrimack. It is a pleasure to present you with this plaque. Your dedication and donation of countless hours has made Merrimack a better place to live and work. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance, April 2010 to October 2017, presented on behalf of the town of Merrimack this 26th day of October 2017. God bless you.
Thank you all. I just want to say, I couldn't have done all the things that I did that you gave me credit for solo. You guys brought out the best in me because of the team that I entered when Dave Yunkelbach first said, "Congratulations for winning," and from that, Tom Ahon, Tom Koenig, everybody from that day on, yourself, just embraced me, took me on, and then I never looked back on anything else of what I might have thought, why I ran, or what I was doing here, but I could not have...it's a team thing. This is one of the best experiences I've ever had for seven years being here, and it's because, really, the whole council's atmosphere of, it's not really about any of us. It's always been about the town, and it's one of the best things I'll always take away. I could not have been effective without having all of you behind me or even against me on issues because you got to hear both sides, and it made me a better counselor as well, too. So, thank you all very much. It's just, it's been a blast, really has, and I will miss it.
We'll miss you, too.
Thanks for all the kind words.
Okay, and I'm going to allow you to make the final motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, do we have point of order, comments of the press?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
He's in a rush now.
I'm in a rush, too, anyway. Comments from the public, press? Apparently not. Thank you for the correction, Mr. Boyd. Comments from the council? Comments from the council?
I hate to extend it.
Go ahead.
But I just wanted to point out, and Peter brought it up earlier, the planning board did have a meeting with potential developers for property where the old Radisson Hotel used to be, and it was heavily attended. A lot of people expressed their opinions. It was basically a non-binding discussion with the developers about potential parking issues and traffic issues, not parking, but traffic issues, and they made several proposals, and they did present about an inch and a half-thick binder of their traffic report on the area and looked at nine different intersections, which is more than normally done, and things of that nature. The summary of that, in my opinion, is that the property developed as retail or commercial would probably develop more traffic than the 240 residential apartments that they're talking about developing, and our consultants agreed with that finding. So, that the initial concept of 240 units there spread across four or five buildings spread across the property seems like a huge number, but the traffic impacts, at least during the rush hour, that would impact the intersection is probably less than what would happen if they developed that full property commercially. The other big takeaway from that is that they're finally got the state to start talking to and listening to them about how they could better coordinate those lights, and especially the light at Executive Park Drive. They talk about a new process where they would use a Bluetooth connection between the intersection of Greeley and Turkey Hill and, or whatever that, whatever that street is, going to Amherst, Continental, Greeley, all of those, right there at Burger King and the gas station, basically using a Bluetooth connection from there to the Executive Park Drive so that it can communicate to that downstream light better as to what's coming at it, and it can do a better job of handling the traffic through there, not backing up and filling that short queue. Every time we've talked to the state in the past, when we developed the mall, when we've done any other development, they've been very reluctant to allow anybody to do anything with those lights. They control them. They don't want anybody setting anything. We've had multiple traffic consultants come in and say, "We could time those, we could do this, we could put in loops, we could..." And they've just shut us down. This time, they're at least talking about it. They're actually excited about it. They'd like to see this particular proposal go forward with this connected, kind of a piggyback-type program, because they want to put it in other parts of the state, and they want the developer to pay for this guinea pig effect. And the developer is good with that because it will help them to develop this whole property. And so, they're making that proposal to go forward. If that does go forward and work even remotely as planned, it will certainly help that intersection be better than it is today, even with the additional traffic, as opposed to worse than it is today. It's hard to get worse than where it is today, at least at the rush hour traffic coming home. The morning traffic doesn't seem to be so bad, but the evening traffic is the very worst in that location, and this might, in fact, turn out to be a good opportunity to expand that. So, it was a really good discussion, and I appreciate the people that came out and asked their questions, and I felt like they got answers. I think most of the people received sufficient answers or good answers to their questions. They're still worried about it, they're still nervous about it, and I am, too, but that happens with any development. And when you look at how they're spreading the buildings out across that major property, how much trees and stuff are still going to be behind that between them and the subdivision that's back there along Turkey Hill, there's actually quite a lot of opportunity there. The only negative that I've heard anybody talking about is that looking out from those apartments to the back of the Wood Springs Hotel is not much of a view, or looking out to the highway, but the people that are on the other side are going to have a nice street area to look at over the brook and stuff like that. I think that was a positive that came out of that, and it was a good step forward at potentially redeveloping that property that's been underutilized for a very long time. And that's all I wanted to add on about the planning board meeting at this point. Other stuff seemed more mundane and trivial compared to that.
To the big item. Okay, any other counselors? Can we go for adjournment now?
Motion to adjourn.
No, it's already been made by...
Seconded.
There we go. Motion made by Dan Dwyer, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven, zero, zero. Good night, everyone. Dan?